Thanks, I'll call the meeting to order. This is the June twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one. Meeting of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for the town of Fairfield. Uh, first item on the agenda is uh, meeting minutes from June eight, twenty-twenty-one.
Move to approve?
Thank you, motion approved by Commissioner Francis, second uh, by uh, Commissioner Corcoran. Thank you, any questions or comments on that? No, hearing none, seeing no hands?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just remembered, I uh, I reviewed the meeting um, on uh, Fair TV, so I'm up to speak.
Right, thanks, and you know what, I went through that whole thing before I started, then I forgot to say. Commissioner Gordon, uh, you are sitting in for Commissioner Braun. Alright, you were at the meeting last time I, I see from uh, from the minutes.
Yes, okay, I was there, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Alright, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand, aye? Any opposed? No, I see everyone raising their hands. Uh, the item, the minutes are approved, uh, with no abstentions and no one opposed. Next item is um, new applications to recommend a public hearing, the first is ten-seventy-three North Benson Road, special exception application at Fairfield University. Who established student housing in a portion of an existing building formerly occupied by a student infirmary, infirmary in the double E zone.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to add to that, um, it is a special exception, does require a public hearing.
Okay, very good. Um, does anyone have any questions or comments, this is uh, her, public hearing is required, so. Yes, Commissioner Noonan?
So move to public hearing.
Thank you, second by Commissioner Corcoran. All those in favor, raise your hand or say aye, aye? That's everyone, the uh, item is uh, moved to public hearing unanimously. Next is uh, seven-fifty Post Road, forty-two Elliot Street, special permit application of seven-fifty Post Road Associates LLC. Pertaining to the construction of a new restaurant in the design commercial district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the site of the former Joe's uh, American Bar and Grill, there's a new restaurant, Chick-fil-A. Being proposed here, we did get, uh, we've received quite a few uh, email correspondence uh, so thus far. So I just wanted to let folks know that uh, that matter is not gonna be discussed uh, with the public this evening, that the purpose of tonight's agenda item is to put the public on notice that this application is pending. And, and hopefully, we'll see a, a vote shortly to send it to a public hearing. We haven't set a date yet for that, but uh, if everything plays out as we've ten, has our tentative schedule, it's likely gonna be the first meeting in August.
Okay.
So we did get a, quite a bit of uh, correspondence in today, with this item being on the agenda, I just wanna let folks know that this is kind of like the first, first call that we have it, we will be posting the material shortly uh, on our website for everybody's access. Uh, but the hearing i- is not gonna be this evening, it will be a subsequent meeting.
Right, right, this is merely to put it on our docket and move it, move it on its course.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Uh, Commissioner Noonan, move to public hearing?
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Corcoran, thank you both. Um, public hearing is, is required on the special permit application, so we should uh, we should do that. Any other questions? Okay, we're ready to vote? Say aye? Okay, that's uh, everyone, that's a unanimous vote, no abstentions and no, no one opposed. Move to public hearing unanimously, thank you. Next item are compliances, coastal site plan applications, the first is twenty-one eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike. It's a zoning compliance application of RK Black Rock One LLC to establish a medical office. You know, former retail space in the design commercial district.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went again, for, for the record, uh, this application is a tenant space within the Gap Old Navy uh, shopping center at Black Rock Turnpike, uh, the tenant that left there was a um, uh, eyelash salon, a retail use, um, that space is to, uh, proposed to be occupied by a medical office, a vein clinic. Uh, there are no exterior changes proposed, and the parking for a medical office is the same as that for retail, so there is no additional parking required as a result of this application. Simply a change from retail use to medical office use.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself in this matter.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Levy.
Mister, Mister De Giacomo is present, so he can sit for Mister Levy.
Excellent, Commissioner De Giacomo, you are now sitting for Mister, Commissioner Levy on this uh, this item.
Hey, great.
Thank you. Um, so can I have a, a motion? Motion to approve by Commissioner Noonan. Second by Commissioner Corcoran, thank you. Commissioner Noonan, you wanna start, any comments?
Um, no, Mr. Went, this uh, complies with regulations with the parking?
It does, medical parking is the same as that for retail, uh, so there's no increase in the parking, in the parking on this site is in compliance.
Okay, and everything else is in compliance?
It is, yes sir.
Okay, for that, based on that, no, no reason to deny.
Very good, Commissioner Corcoran?
I agree with Commissioner Noonan.
Okay, thanks, I mean, I, I also reviewed the application, and there were no issues that I saw on uh, my review. Anyone else have any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, motion is to approve, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand, aye? Okay, that's everyone, so this uh, motion carries unanimously, no op, no one opposed and no one abstains. Uh, we had one recusal. Commissioner Levy, thanks very much. The next item on our agenda is twenty-three seventeen Black Rock Turnpike. Zoning compliance application of Fairfield Woods Plaza LLC to relocate and refurbish an existing pole sign in the design commercial district.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, again, Jim Went, for the record, uh, the existing pole sign for Fairfield Woods Plaza uh, is proposed to be relocated and refurbished, there's an existing sign there, and any materials, there's a kind of a before and after uh, image. The existing sign cabinet will be maintained while the existing semi-circle design above the cabinet is to be removed. The existing sign is obscured by existing uh, street trees. Therefore, the proposal includes an expanded entry drive island to accommodate this sign, it's being moved to a more central location on the site. The applicant is requesting that the sign be permitted within twenty-five feet uh, from the property line, which is in your discretion, the existing sign is actually thirteen feet from the property line. But twenty-six feet from the edge of the pavement. The way this, if you look at the site plan, the property line actually bows inward while the um, pavement line kind of moves away, so while even, so this proposed new location is actually closer to the property line. It's actually farther away from the edge of the pavement. So, it will be closer to the property line, but uh, twenty-six feet from the edge of pavement. Um, versus, I'm sorry, I've lost my spot here. The existing size twenty-six feet from the edge of the pavement, the proposed signs approximately thirty-four feet from the edge of the pavement, so while it's getting closer to the property line because the property line curves. Um, the sign's actually a little bit farther away from the edge of the street line. So you do have it in your discretion, given uh, unique circumstances on the site to allow a sign within the twenty-five foot setback. The existing sign already is, uh, in there proposing to um, relocate it as shown on that drawing, that's all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Corcoran?
Is part of, is part of this um, to place the sign in a new island?
There is a, there's an existing island in the driveway now, separating the entry from the exit. They're proposing, there's a, they're proposing to make that island longer in length and depth, so that the sign would sit in that island.
Is there any um, how do we make decisions about safe traffic patterns in parking lots?
Well, the site plan has adequate aisle width between the proposed sign in the parking bay behind it, so it's got the requisite two-way aisle width. Um, and the sign itself will be fur, far enough into the site that you'll, you'll be past the sign, and you know, and is, you probably know, um, this exit drive is controlled by a traffic light. So, um, there's not, shouldn't be an issue with sightline, but there, the, the sign is deep enough into the site that you will be past it before you need to, you know, um, so shouldn't, won't obstruct the sightline for exiting vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, can we, I get a motion on the table so that we can um, have further discussion? Uh, Commissioner Brain, motion to approve?
Move to approve, uh, with the um, with the applicant's request, uh, for the replacement of the sign.
Right, so that's without a condition, it's as shown on the plans? Yeah, very good, so motion approved by Commissioner Brain, and second by Commissioner Noonan? Yeah, okay, um. Yeah, I, I was, I'm, I'm having a little trouble with the uh, it's cutting further into the, into the setback, but further away from the pavement. Uh, and I'm, I'm not following that on the site.
Okay, maybe, Emily, is it possible to click on that link to pull up that plan? I'll try to walk you through that, it's.
Cause I mean, look, we're, we're all familiar with this shopping plaza, we're all familiar with this sign. I think we can all agree that this sign is quite old and in need of some renovation and, and repair. Um, and I think, well, it might be premature, speaking for, you know, all of us, I think we can all agree.
Yeah, if, 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 if we can't get the image up, oh, here we go, the basically, the, if, let's, the, the street line is not parallel to the property line, I mean, I'm sorry, the edge of the pavement is not parallel to the property line. So, you can see, there's a bow in the, in the property line.
Can you zoom in, Emily?
Yeah, is it possible to zoom in on that a little bit?
Go as deep as you can.
Okay, so, i- if, if you see, in the, there, there's, the highlighting on the, on the left-hand portion highlights the, where the existing sign is, and you can see the dark line, the dark black line is the property line, and at that location, it's roughly parallel to the edge of the pavement, you can see the, that there's a property line, and then beyond that, you can see a sidewalk, and then the next line represents the curb line of Black Rock Turnpike. So as, as you move along to the right, you can see the property line bows inward in a, in a curve.
Yeah.
Such that that property line gets much closer to the parking lot. But the pavement line is kind of moving away a little bit, it's not, i- if, if the property lines were straight and parallel, straight, y- you'd have Black Rock Turnpike pavement line moving away from the property line a little bit, but it, but here, you've got that curving bow. So, in, in the, the highlighting to the right is the proposed location, so it's, it's fairly comparable, if the lines were parallel with each other. The location is fairly comparable and setback to the existing location, but because that's property line bows inward, it's closer to the property line.
Yeah.
And conversely, the pavement, edge of pavement curb line is moving away from the sidewalk a little bit there, so it's actually further away from the edge of the street.
Yeah, so, so, you know, what we, what we all probably didn't realize, um, was that um, the right-of-way here is, gets quite wide, and um, there are areas of the property which we all probably thought were the private property, but which are in fact in, in the public right-of-way. Where the arrows on the pavement on the entrance and exit are posted, those are outside the property line in the town right-of-way. Or I should say, it's state, it's state.
That's, that's correct.
State, state right-of-way.
Yeah, it's not uncommon for those improvements to be within the right-of-way portion of the street.
Yeah.
But it's a little unusual here in that this uh, property line is, is not even close to being parallel to the, to the edge of the pavement, but.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if you compare the two site locations, they're fairly comparable in their distance from the pavement, but it, but because of that bowing inward, it's technically closer to the property line than, than the previous location.
And so, you know, moving the sign from one corner of the property to another location, I guess the, the question becomes, you know, and, and it, it, it is from what I see, but I'd ask you to confirm that the sign otherwise complies with our regulations in all respects.
The sign itself, yes, it's this very same sign that's there now, they're gonna refurbish the cabinet and put it on new posts and uh, um, but yes. Aside from the, the location of the setback, it is otherwise compliant, yes sir.
Yeah, so can, and, and maybe we can ask uh, um, Mr. Decker to go out and remove the um, the other signs that are posted there behind it, that we see, you know, hanging on the uh, on the, the light in the parking lot on the, on the adjacent property.
We can do that.
Very good, okay, um.
Is it taking away any parking spaces?
No, it is not.
Like it is.
No, where do you see, where, why would you say that?
The, the yellow looked like it was across two parking spaces.
No, the, 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 there are no parking spaces there, that's the median of the e- entrance and the exit. It's, it's a, it's a median space.
The crosshatching on the left is the existing sign, the uh, the middle, the, the, on the right-hand side is where the proposed location.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I mean, and that, that um, that corner location, use some landscaping. Alright, well, anyone else have any other questions or comments? Okay, we're ready to vote, and um, Commissioner De Giacomo, I'm sorry, but Mr. Levy's not recused from this one.
That's okay.
All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand? Okay, that's uh, that's everyone, so that uh, is approved unanimously, no one opposed and no one abstains. Thank you. Um. Next is ten-nineteen Fairfield Beach Road Coastal Site Plan Application of Tom Gannam. Pertaining to the construction of a single-family dwelling in the Beach District.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went, for the record, uh, the single-family dwelling on this lot, uh, has been demolished. In a new FEMA-compliant, single-family dwelling is proposed. The design is compliant with the Beach District regulations, and the plans were forwarded to the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection for their review and comments. Uh, the report that we received back is included in your packet with maintenance of proper erosion and sedimentation controls. This proposal is not anticipated to have any adverse impact on coastal resources, and we therefore recommend its approval.
Okay, very good, thank you. I have a motion on this one. Commissioner Noonan, motion to approve, okay, very good, and second by Commissioner Levy, thank you. Mr. Noonan, any uh, questions or comments?
Excuse me, no, I do not.
Commissioner Levy? Take that as a, as a no. Um, alright, I uh, I, I reviewed the, the report and, and the conclusions as well, and I don't see any reason to uh, to refuse this application, looks like it complies with the, all of the um, uh, regulations and um, is consistent with the uh, with the CAM. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand or say aye? Excellent, that's our everyone, so that's approved unanimously, no opposed, no one opposed and no one abstains. Next item is our pre-application review, fifteen oh-one dash fifteen twenty-five Kings Highway. Uh, we will conduct a non-binding pre-application review for a potential uh, development proposal.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill Fitzpatrick, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, my name's Bill Fitzpatrick. I'm an attorney in Fairfield with the law firm of Fitzpatrick, Ray and Malonia. I'm here this evening representing Powers Court Westover LLC. My clients and I appreciate the opportunity to be, to be a part of this pre-application process. First, the purpose of this pre-app is to give the P and Z an idea of what the applicant is looking to propose and to obtain feedback from you. The applicant wants to avoid the preparation of a formal application with the drawings, reports, et cetera, for a plan that the commission does not have a positive reaction to. And to avoid the expenditure of time by the commission to conduct a public hearing on a matter with no prospects of approval. The applicant believes this proposal will be a positive one for the transit-oriented district. And would I, like to outline it for the benefit of the commission. We do encourage any and all comments and questions. This is an informal proceeding, there's no drainage report, there's no traffic report. This is rather an opportunity for the applicant to give you essentially a big picture look at this proposal, and then discuss it with you. With me tonight is Mr. Tom McLaughlin, a principal of Powers Court Westover, the present property owner. Also with me tonight on the call is Sealan Pather, an architect with Beinefield Architecture with offices in South Norwalk. Mr. Pather will be part of this rather short presentation. The properties in question, fifteen oh-one Kings Highway and fifteen twenty-five Kings Highway are located on the east side of Kings Highway and above the railroad tracks. These properties presently contain two office buildings, are located in the design industrial and design commercial zones respectively. The intent of the applicant is to retain the office building at fifteen oh-one Kings Highway, which has been relatively recently remodeled, and replace the office building at fifteen twenty-five Kings Highway with a new mixed-use building. Together, these properties will be designed to constitute a mixed-use project as part of the transit-oriented district. The applicant presently leases property at fourteen thirty-six Kings Highway, which is located on the opposite side of Kings Highway. In order to provide additional parking, is the applicant's intent to utilize that parking as part of this TOD proposal? As part of this pre-application proposal, the applicant submitted a conceptual plan set for the property. I will introduce Sealan Pather in just a few moments to outline that plan set. I should note that this proposal incorporates a number of recommendations from the Goody Clancy Fairfield Transit Oriented Development Study, including specifically, the utilization of a maximum residential use of eighty percent and the maximum bedrooms per acre of seventy-five bedrooms. The regulation amendment, increasing the maximum residential use to eighty percent, reflects recognition of the fact that the implementation of a successful transit-oriented district requires the construction of residential units first, in order to support the subsequent development of retail and commercial space. The best evidence of this is probably the experience of Trademark One and Trademark Two, which are quality developments, where the residential units have filled relatively quickly. But we're finding commercial tenants has proven to be a much slower process. The regulation amendment permitting the maximum number of bedrooms per acre of seventy-five units is, of seventy-five bedrooms, is um, representative of the fact that the smaller units are more popular. The construction of more units and thus more bedrooms as the part of studio and one-bedroom units means the units will be occupied more quickly, which is a good thing for the TOD. Perhaps a side benefit is the fact that smaller units are likely to be occupied by families without school-age children. The conceptual plan also incorporates the Goody Clancy study recommendations for a first-floor ceiling height of fifteen feet and utilizes the existing joint parking usage section of the regulations. This conceptual plan does provide affordable housing at the suggested study rate of twelve percent of the proposed dwelling units and increase from the ten percent which is presently part of the zoning regulations. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Mr. Sealan Pather, an architect with Beinefield Architecture, to act, to outline the conceptual plans for the benefit of the commission, Sealan.
Good evening, good evening, good evening everyone, my name is Sealan Papa, I'm a principal at Beinefield Architecture. Uh, Emily, can you see my screen?
Uh, we, we can, and if, if you could um, close the panels on the right and the left and uh, make it uh, for like a presentation mode, that would be helpful.
How's that, is that any better?
Yeah, that is, yeah, see if you can enlarge that a little bit, yeah, then I don't know if you can do full screen, uh, so that we don't have the top and the bottom.
You're testing my li, my knowledge of the.
And that's, yeah, that's.
I apologize.
If that's not possible, then, then just uh, blow it up and make it, make it a little bit bigger, yeah, that's it, thank you.
Okay, um, so this will be a short presentation, please feel, keep it informal, please feel free to interrupt me with any questions. Uh, this is a, a map of the area, you're familiar with the area, and show the metro, federal metro train station here, and um, a series of plans for development of this parcel property and this parcel property, that probably crossed your desks. The Whole Food Markets, the Whole Food Markets in the south, CVS Pharmacy, Home Depot. And off-screen, but I'm gonna pull the Google, Google images I have showing the trademark developments um, to the north, called north. Uh, the Kimis Highway. And what I'd like to show you here on the scheme is an off-site parking lot that is part of the application that performs some of the parking requirement for our project. And here's the site. The existing office building that Bill mentioned that we're gonna keep, and this one will come down. So what this uh, plan intends to show is that there's a pedestrian walkway all along the west side of Kings Highway. Um, that's one that we think will provide the connectivity that this area demands. And we would propose to connect to that walkway with two crosswalks um, in this area from our site. And that would link the residence of this property both to the commercial and down south like the Whole Food, Whole Foods Market, but also the parking lot that we want to use as part of this project. So that'll switch. This was in your package, and all it is, is a, a survey of the existing conditions, again, this building will come down, this will stay. You'll see that uh, this parking configuration stays here while we change everything in this area. Train tracks to the back, um, and Kings Highway at the front. So the building is essentially fifty units, fifty residential units, five stories. Uh, there are thirty-nine covered spaces, nineteen uncovered spaces and thirty-six spaces I just mentioned off-site. There's about four thousand three hundred and fifty square foot of co-work space in the new building. Seven thousand eight hundred square foot of existing office space in the existing building. So I'll just walk you through the plan, it's the best way to get a feel for it. This is the, this is part of the existing con- configuration of parking, as it exists inside today. And we, we tend to build a building power out to the train tra, train tracks, the main mass of the building power out to the train tracks, with a portion of that, you'll see in the rendering, that runs along the street line. Well, part of the goal of this design was to screen the parking, which I think we've done, um, somewhat successfully. So this area here is covered parking, it has the mass of the building above it and screened from the street with this portion of the building. There are thirty-nine spaces in here, and between this area and this area, there are nineteen pa- parking spaces. The intent of the, this courtyard is to be a parking court. What I mean by that is we would like to treat it like it's a pedestrian zone, you happen to park on it, and maybe that's achieved by um, all of this being, for example, cobblestone or cobble, stamped cobblestone, parking or brick papers. So it feels like a connection between the existing office, uh, and the new building that we're creating. You'll see in the rendering that this is, uh, these are schematic plans, they don't show where there's glass and where there isn't, but. You'll see in the rendering that this is, these are schematic plans. They don't show where there's glass and where there isn't, but this was to be a gleam facade. Uh, this would be the front door of the development. The idea is that you would have your leasing and a cowork concept that's becoming more and more popular in the, um, in the amenitized residential buildings that we're doing. Um, that has obviously increased with the work from home, so over the last year and a half. Uh, but that idea of providing cowork in a residential building, uh, was populated before COVID hit in the last eighteen months. So the idea here is that you would come in, main doors, or you would come in from the rear, from the parking. Uh, you'd be received. There was a person operating the space in a, either a leasing person who would take care of any needs for a resident or allow you to rent an office space, or rent a conference room, or rent a space in this area to use during the day on hourly basis, maybe a daily basis or monthly basis. Um, I think the closest example of what we're trying to achieve here is, is a WeWork concept. This is the second floor. Um, so the concept with, with any of these spaces, to make these spaces successful, uh, they need more than just the, the office component. So we, we offer a gym both for the residents and people who rent space in the offices, for example. So you come upstairs and you're in a more relaxed environment, um, with sort of bar area and a, and a seating area and a lounge environment, but still with private, private, semi-private booths that you could work in and you have a gym at your disposal. Very schematic. Again, these are early days for these plans, but you could come up in these elevators. We secure these elevators. So if you come up from downstairs, I'm, and I'm sorry for jumping around too much with the navigation. But if you come up from these elevators, you come in to the rear doors of the elevators. You would never be allowed into the residential corridor. And if you're a resident, you'd have a keycard access to this door that would allow you to the space. So it's separation of space, even though they're within the same buildings. So this cowork space can function, um, like a semi-public space or a business. Once you get up into the second floor, um, and third floors, I'll show you that. You're in a more, uh, regular pattern of double loaded corridor with a mix of one, two, one, one bedrooms, two bedrooms and studios. Double loaded corridor and your units and then your exit stairs and your elevator. Uh, another nice part of this, this design that you'll see in the, um, in 3D or the image that we have is that there's two terraces. And so there's an open terrace here that again runs parallel to the main road. Uh, and people using the cowork space could use that terrace. So that's, and then amenity that we think would be popular. This is a typical level at three and four. Again, just a simple double loaded corridor, uh, with units on both sides, train tracks on this side. Uh, we've done a few of these TOD developments in the last few years and we've, we've become educated on what you need to do to provide a residential unit up against the train tracks and acoustics and so on. So this will be an acoustically treated facade. Um, and, and then that would take care of the noise or mitigate the noise issues for these units facing the, uh, the train tracks. And once you get up to the highest level, we wanted to break up the massing. Um, we want to create some interest visually over, in overall building. And part of that solution was to, to drop off the massing at the highest level, uh, and provide a roof terrace for residents only. So this will be private to residents only. So those ideas are here again in this image. So the triangular site, um, created some interesting design puzzles, but so the approach was to line Kings Highway with its predominantly glass facade so continue, continue the street wall, for lack of a better description. Even though this, this is one of the projects that will start forming a street wall. Um, isn't a strong one right now. Uh, and keep the mass of the building, the larger mass of the building that rises, uh, that rises to five stories and four stories in this location, power to the train tracks and set back further from the street. Um, it's a, it's a large mass, uh, monolithic mass going across here. So we broke that up with slightly different but complimentary finessuration treatments on, on this mass of the building and then this mass of the building. Uh, that provides some visual interest and separated by, um, another architectural treatment of the circulation core. And here you can see, you'd actually, now hopefully this will be animated when it's used, when it's in use and, um, and occupied. But this could be a beautiful roof deck serving a public, what is essentially a public space or semi-public space. Um, and then another roof deck serving the residence and the private space. Uh, one, and again, one of the goals was to completely screen this parking. So for example, we could have IP with catting screening this parking garage. Here on this side, this portion of the parking garage on this side, it's fully screened by the building on this edge. Um, and then the other entrance is pretty far recessed. So that's all I have really. Um, this is as far as we've got.
Very good.
Know if there are any questions?
Thank you very much. So, um, interesting that you, 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 um, wove into the presentation or the, the, the design plan that it would be for, um, office share, a share, uh, business. Um, what, what was the, um, the logic behind that as opposed to some other form of commercial tenant?
Well, I think Bill can also point on this, but the, the idea was we needed, we needed that space to be a business use to achieve the mixed use that we're going for. Uh, and, and we're doing it on two projects right now, uh, both in Norwalk, where we are creating these large amenity spaces that are beautiful but often underused by residents. Um, and are attractive to both residents and people who, uh, who, who need of office space or office-like spaces and recreation spaces that go along with it. So you could monetize that. Um, and there's, there's a symbiotic relationship between a residential use and an outside public use for people seeking a use like that. And so it's, it's, I think the short answer to your question is, it's more common now in residential buildings and, uh, and approach we've used before.
Hmm. Interesting. And, and, uh, now that you've, I presume from your comments that you converted some commercial space in those buildings in Norwalk from sort of perhaps, uh, marketing for other types of commercial uses? And you, you, you turn those into these, uh, office share situations and, and you've seen some success with that?
Yeah, yeah, we have. Specifically in, in the one that we just completed, the East Norwalk Train Station was an experiment of sorts, um, because we had people offered, we had a, one particular large tenant leaving New York City. He used, very used to Class A offices, which highly amenitized. Um, and there wasn't that product, um, that they could find where they wanted to be close to the train station. And we had this residential building with this beautiful amenity. So the idea was to share that amenity with the office. Um, and that worked pretty well and is working pretty well.
Very good. Thanks.
So we could do the same for, we could do the same for this building where they could walk, if they want to go to the gym, any, any person using this office could walk across here and go to the gym in the morning, take a shower, come back to work.
Very good. And Attorney Fitzpatrick, how does the, um, the parking requirement fit together, uh, under the, you know, the, 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 uh, you know, the, the proposed, uh, changes to the regulations and what is?
The, um, Mr. Chairman, with the off-site parking, we satisfy their TOD regulations.
And so is that under common ownership or would it be a leased situation? How would that work?
That would remain to be seen. Uh, we recognize the fact that we have to have it committed basically for the length of the project. So there'd be some work to be done to either lease whatever. I don't want to put my client in a box negotiation-wise, but we would have to accommodate that in some fashion.
Got it. So that's, that's, that's sort of a work in progress.
Correct.
And if not in that location, perhaps somewhere else?
Correct.
How far do you think you need to be or what do you think, I should say, what do you think, do you think the limit is on how far that, that could be? And it's kind of interesting to see, uh, you know, a parking share, uh, uh, across and down the street as opposed to an adjacent lot.
I think the regulation calls for five hundred feet. Um, but you know, given the size of the metro station parking lot, it's probably more than five hundred feet from the back of the lot to the station in any event. So and this, and this is, you know, approximately two hundred feet to fourteen thirty-six. So there will be some options for us.
Gotcha. Excellent. Very interesting. Well, that's, uh, it certainly looks, uh, very visually appealing and it sets up the streetscape the way that we, um, you know, anticipated, uh, or are trying to encourage, um, uh, with that parking in the, the rear. Um, yeah, maybe we can stop the share for a moment and I think, uh, I see Commissioner Noonan, but I'd like to see if other commissioners have, um, questions and comments. Commissioner Noonan?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, Attorney Fitzpatrick, I, I assume you're gonna, the application will be under TOD regulations?
That's correct. It's Mr. Ch, Mr. Noonan.
And will you be seeking any, is there any, um, any regulation amendments you're gonna be seeking or are you gonna be going strictly under the confines of the TOD?
The two regulation amendments I would be seeking are ones that are recommended in the Goody Clancy study. One is to permit a maximum residential use of eighty percent as opposed to the present seventy percent. It's the second, and the second is to permit maximum bedrooms per acre of seventy-five bedrooms as opposed to the present fifty bedrooms. And again, those are, I think, we've recognition of the fact that the residential is needed to support the commercial. Um, you know, Trademark One and Trademark Two have rented their residential very successfully. The commercial is, is a much more difficult process. You need the people on site to support the commercial. And relative to the number of bedrooms per acre, now I think the, the fact of the matter is that these smaller units are more popular and you need a higher bedroom count and more units for it to be successful as well and meet the market. And again, both of those recommendations are included in your Goody Clancy study.
Thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry, one more, um, the recommendations are to the, uh, and the amendments will be going to the TOD regulations?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can, um, we stop the screen sharing so that I can see other commissioners?
Um. And can you cancel my screen share? Oh, there it is. Sorry. I got it.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. All right. So I said, thank you. And, uh, my intuition was correct. So I see Commissioner, then Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Berman? Yep, you're on mute.
Uh, so, um, I noticed on one of the drawings you, um, and maybe several of the drawings you noted that crosswalks should be installed because there's going to be, um, pedestrian traffic on Kings Highway, um, you know, back and forth between the buildings or, um, from their cars, uh, to and from their apartments and so forth. Do you have, um, ideas about, uh, other traffic improvements that might be necessary? And about the flow of pedestrians back and forth, uh, between the different buildings and rocky areas?
Mr. Berman, we have not engaged our traffic consultants as yet. That is certainly an item that we have to address. We're well aware we have to address it. Um, but at the moment, we haven't gone that far. We recognize it has to be dealt with, particularly throughout Kings Highway.
Mm-hmm. So conceptually just, uh, crosswalks at this point? You're, you're conceiving?
At this point, yes.
Okay. Other, other traffic improvements are to be, to be determined with your, your consultant. Um, and, and, uh, what about, uh, the, you know, the, um, the ways in which people will be traveling back and forth between different parts of the complex, uh, sort of organically? Has there been any thought given to that in the sort of the conceptual design phase? Yep?
It, it, it's simply too conceptual at this point. We recognize there has to be a pedestrian um, ease of access from one building to another and to the parking. And we will certainly address it, uh, at the time we present something to the commission.
Okay.
Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, uh, my questions are along the same lines. Are there any existing sidewalks, uh, either adjacent to the building or on that side of Kings Highway, uh, leading towards Whole Foods?
Commissioner Levy, I think the, uh, if we, the initial picture that, uh, Sealan had up shows there are sidewalks all along the other side of Kings Highway. Um, from more or less where that fifteen, fourteen, twenty-six parking lot is down to Whole Foods. There are very few, is my recollection, sidewalks on the side of the, of Kings Highway where these buildings are. So it's something we have to address. That's part of the reason we anticipated getting the pedestrians across the street as soon as possible to get to the off-site parking.
Thank you.
You were muted there, Matt.
Commissioner Braun, sorry.
Um, Attorney Fitzpatrick, when you mentioned five hundred feet from which parking lot and how many units will need to walk to, to their car at the Metro North parking lot? Like how many residences will be able to park onsite versus walking up to the, what, uh, the shared parking?
Um, first of all, the five hundred feet is in the regulation. I think that parking area is about two hundred and forty feet.
Okay.
Half of the five hundred feet. Uh, secondly.
Excuse me, on the eastbound side or the westbound side parking lot? It's mostly on the?
There are, there are fifty-eight parking, this is conceptually, fifty-eight parking spaces onsite, thirty-six parking spaces offsite. I, I certainly think that the, there are fifty units. If memory serves me, we've had a parking experience, um, you know, concrete experience from Trademark One where they have approximately one space utilized per unit. If that were the case here, the fifty units could be accommodated totally onsite with the anticipation that some, a good number of them are leaving during the day when the office, uh, which requires, you know, some parking as well, when the office comes into work.
Okay. And then I missed the beginning. I apologize, but is the development area, the entire triangle up to Constant Common Road or Rhode Island Road or on one end? And then the pointy end of the triangle on the other end? It's the whole area is the development area, right? That whole triangle?
Uh, I'm not certain which triangle we're talking about, but on the site plan, um, the fact of the matter is it, the entire triangle is being utilized, but the
Okay.
existing office building is being retained. Um, the building to the east, if you will, and the building to the west directly abouting the tracks is the one that's going to come down and be replaced with residential.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if I, I made the, to answer the question, Kathy, it doesn't go all the way to Constant Common Way. There's another property where Citizens Auto Body is located that is not part of this development footprint.
But the building that has something called Wake Up Coffee, that's part of this development? I don't know what it is, but it's it's not fifteen oh one or fifteen twenty-five. It's another building along, uh, the train tracks. That's a pretty big.
Not part of this.
No, that's, that's not part.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thanks.
Other, um, comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Francis?
I, I think it's a, a very progressive idea and, uh, very, appears to be very attractive and I, I'm impressed with the fact that you're going to deal with the acoustics. That's, that's certainly helped the marketability. I hope, I would hope you could get more commercial in little shops as it's getting very developed down there. And I wouldn't think there'd be a terrible problem hitting our seventy-thirty current regulation. But we'll see as, as things move along.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was the nature of my comment about the, my questions about the, um, the WeWork situation and why, you know, that was, seemed, seemed to me perhaps even a little premature to be identifying the type of commercial tenant that might be desirable. Type of commercial tenant that might be desirable, um, you know, in in this space on this streetscape. You know, this far in in advance, but I guess in terms of the concept, you know, you start somewhere and. If that's what takes flight, that's, you know, that's that's commercial space. Um, very good. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I think we did well to um stay within our guardrails here, uh both in terms of content and time. Um, we appreciate getting a preview of uh what the applicant here is um thinking about in uh in terms of. Um, implementing uh some of the work that we've done um in 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 the in the TOD studies and and such. Um, you know, in particular, uh I'd, you know, give credit here to, you know, uh aligning the um. The facade of the building to the streetscape and combining the, you know, the mixed-use uh nature of the. Uh, of the project and the amenities and, you know, trying to encourage a walking walkability and and um, you know, getting the uh. Uh, the folks uh out on the street and such.
And we appreciate the opportunity to present, Mister Chairman.
Okay, so um with that, I'll say thanks and um we'll we'll move on to our next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So the next uh is uh our public, um, we have. Three items on tonight, um. Forty-five Sherman, then thirty-eight Beaumont Street, then fifty-five forty-five Park Avenue. Um, for members of the public that are here, we'll start with the applicant. Um, once the app concludes with the presentation, we'll go to public comment. After public comment, the applicant will have a rebuttal, and then the public hearing on that particular item will close. Run to the next item, and if we don't reach the end of our agenda, we'll obviously carry this forward over to our next regular. Regular meeting. Um, if you want to be heard, just uh go into the chat, you can list your name, we'll call people in order that they sign up. Uh, but if you don't sign up, we'll just make a general, and you know, a call for for public input at the appropriate time and you can just jump in. Um, and you can always submit your comments on anything uh in writing by email. Uh, with that, I'll call the first one, forty-five Sherman Street. Special permit application of forty-five Sherman Street LLC for a second-floor dormer addition. For an existing commercial building in the Center Design District.
Uh, good evening, Mister Chairman, uh John Fallon for the record, uh I'm a lawyer at fifty-three Sherman Street. Members of the commission, uh good afternoon or good morning, good evening as well. If forty-five Sherman Street sounds ho- close, yes, they are my next-door neighbors, uh the Doyle Agency and Tim Doyle, who I believe is on the line here. Uh, we share a parking lot. Uh, the the property is located in the Center Design Business District. It is, as I said, the uh the home of the the Doyle Agency. A little background on the Doyle Agency, uh it's a family business, it's been located here in Fairfield for over fifty years. And it deals with providing personal lines of insurance uh to individuals and companies. For a long time, its business platform uh has been designed for techno- from a technological perspective. Uh, to basically service clients uh with convenient access to those services online and offsite. Uh, basically, this agency uh is always client-oriented so that there is very little activity, and I can attest to that personally. At the Sherman Street location, uh where its representatives of the agency visit. Uh, their clients either at their place of business or at home. Uh, that all leads to a situation where, as I've said in my narrative, probably you get one client visit a month at that location. The history of the site is is interesting. In two thousand and two, the prior owners received permission from this commission. To convert the second floor of the accessory structure that we are talking about, that is the subject of this application. Uh, to office use. Uh, that involved a conversion of two hundred and eighty square feet of an additional office space. In two thousand and nine, they returned. They also went to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And they got a variance to reduce the parking from seven to five in order to convert the first floor of that accessory. Uh, structure to office use, and that encompassed four hundred and eighty-five square feet. So at that point, we had four hundred and eighty-five plus two hundred and eighty square feet. What we propose and what the architectural plans show you uh tonight is not to make any exterior alteration to the building. Other than to add two dormers, uh which will in fact increase the total square footage on that second floor area. To three hundred square feet. Uh, the reason we're doing that is we'd like to create two offices. That will be utilized as the offices for the principals, uh Shayna Moore and Tim Doyle of the Doyle Agency. With the advent of COVID and the changes in our business environment. Uh, whereas Tim and Shayna used to spend the majority of their time in New York City or traveling around. Uh, visiting clients, they find now they're visiting with more clients remotely, and they would like to have this additional office space. Uh, to accommodate their personal needs as part of their business. We did go to the Zoning Board of Appeals on May sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. And they did unanimously approve variants of section twelve point seven point six point two and set twelve point seven point six point three. With regard to the side and rear property line setbacks that are required as a result of the addition of these dormers. Uh, we did receive, obviously, our neighbors all received notices. It's important to point out that the gra- the variances that were granted are less than the existing conditions. Uh, that exist. This building is a non-conforming building, has been for many, many decades. And this, the the dormers are intruding into the setback, but less so than the original building. We also got a variance of section twenty-eight uh to provide for a reduction in the required parking. Uh, to accommodate the three hundred spaces. So it's a very straightforward application. This is a great local business that's been in town for fifty years. I can personally attest to the fact that they are great neighbors. They maintain the property beautifully. Uh, it's a great business use because we don't have a lot of client interaction in 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 from the building. But this small addition of three hundred square feet does require a special permit approval because of the exterior alteration of the dormers. And it's going to provide an opportunity for uh Tim and Shayna to have office space now that they're spending more time at their office rather than traveling. So we hope you will find the application to be appropriate. It's obviously, the plan is gonna be very consistent. Architecturally with what's there now, and it certainly will not have any adverse impact on the Center Design District. Or any neighbors, including myself, so we hope you'll favorably uh consider the application.
Thank you very much. Um, I have a couple of questions, but I'll turn it over. See if um anyone else on the commission has any questions or comments for Attorney Fallon. Commissioner Braun?
It's down this way. Yes, um Attorney Fallon, I'm just trying to visualize, I'm looking at an aerial I found. Is this, the accessory building is the one you're talking about? What's in the main building? Is this accessory building behind?
The accessory building is to the rear of the parcel, it abuts the police station parking lot. The main building is a two-story building which forever has had a first-floor office use. And a second-floor residential use, and there's nothing gonna change in the main building.
So you're, you're adding some structures to the top air- to the second floor of. The accessory building. It doesn't look like it's near any other even residential or office building of the neighbors.
It's not. It abuts our, my parking lot at fifty-three Sherman Street and the Police Department parking lot, and the only thing that we're adding. As I said, are are two dormers that will allow us to expand uh the interior floor area. Habitable floor area by three hundred square feet.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Corcoran?
Yeah, I'm I'm looking at the elevations. There are two pages of elevations. One is uh the new elevations showing the new dormers. And below it is another one, and some of those elevations are marked proposed elevations. Are these earlier changes that are?
I I would assume so, because the only changes that we're making to the structure are those, the the addition of the second story, the two, the second-story dormers. Correct.
So these are mislabeled?
I I can only, I don't, I can only assume that. I don't think we're making, we're not making any changes to the the first-floor area. The only change structurally is to add the two dormers on the second floor. Increase the space by three hundred square feet.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the, I mean, to to that point, I was having some difficulty following the the plans. I mean, I think I haven't figured out, but. There are, you know, listed for proposed rear elevation, proposed front elevation and such.
Yeah, the only changes to the structure, as I say, is as shown on the elevation, and that i- is 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 the second floor. Uh, the the second story, the two dormers.
So maybe you could point that out on the plans.
I don't have the plans shared. I don't know if Mister Went can show them.
Yeah, M Line can bring those up.
And I don't know if uh Mister Doyle, if Mister Doyle is on the call.
Yeah, I'm here, I'll.
Yep, thank you. This is Tim Doyle, who's uh.
So I I see the dormer on the back of the building there, on the, I know, the the far building away from Sherman Street, right? If you scroll down into the deeper pages with the cross-sections and the elevations. Right, I see a a little second-story deck porch area, right?
Yeah.
It says proposed, proposed front elevation, proposed rear elevation and so forth. Um, which are the proposed dormers?
Can I, this is Shayna Moore, can I interrupt here?
Sure.
Okay, so the, if you, the, if you're actually looking down the driveway where it says proposed. Elevation Sherman Street on that one, that is what you see from the driveway. So the dormers are left and right.
I see.
And so it's, okay, and then there's a little deck off of the right-side dormer. Over the door that enters the building, and then you have a dormer on the left side. That's, but the technically, the front, he's labeling the front because the door is actually on the side as you're driving down the driveway.
Okay.
It's not, you don't see it when you're going down, so it's, it's a little confusing with the way it's labeled, but the proposed front elevation. Is really on the side if you're looking at it from from this perspective.
Okay, and and the, the the deck on the second floor there, we'll call it a deck. Um, that's, that doesn't exist today, does it?
No, it does not.
No, but it it is, it doesn't create any non-compliance that hasn't been dealt with by way of the variance that was granted.
Right.
And it was part of the plans that were approved by ZPA and all the neighbors having received notice.
Sure, I I I I'm, that wasn't really part of my question, but I appreciate that. Um, so two dormers and the the deck. Um, anything else new proposed uh from the existing structure?
I know.
As far as.
Go ahead Shayna.
As, as far as structural, no. As far as structural exterior, no, I mean, we're renovating the inside.
Yeah, and that's.
There's already two bathrooms in there, there's, yeah, we're just renovating the interior.
And I'm I'm curious, um, you know, the, so we've, the, there have been two variances for reduction in parking. I understand that the, um, you know, the summary, um, that time has sort of shown that. That there is not a need for uh client parking spaces and such. Has there been ample of parking? Has it been an an issue? You've had extra spaces, I mean?
I I'll let, I'll let Shayna and Tim address that. I can say though firsthand, being again, the next-door neighbor, parking has not been an issue. From my perspective, the, as I say, it's a, it's a very low-key operation in terms of volume. I don't know if Shayna and Tim would want to confirm that as far as their experience.
Yeah, I I can tell you, obviously, being here um daily now, the the parking is a non-issue. We do, we do utilize two spots in the downtown parking area. Um, and even those, you know, they're sitting in the bowl in front of me, um, and they're just. You know, for the days that we might have extra people coming in. Um, a a lot of our staff is now working remotely pretty effectively. Um, so it's, you know, it really, and and again, the 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 client traffic here is is basically zero.
Yeah, you anticipate that is gonna, you're gonna maintain the remote work environment, even though we're sort of. Breaking down the, you know, eliminating the, um, you know, the restrictions and folks' businesses are starting to come back to work.
I I do, I actually, um, you know, some of our staff have young children and they've kind of gotten into a routine, and it's it's worked. It's worked really efficiently for them a- and well for us. So, um, as long as it's, as long as they're, as long as our clients are happy and they're getting. You know, satisfactory service on a day-to-day basis, we're pretty amenable to letting our folks. You know, do what they're most comfortable with.
Very good, and um in terms of the variance and some more curiosity than anything else, what was the nature of the the hardship that was? Uh, planned?
Yeah, the 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 nature of the hardship was twofold. One, there's case law that says that the existing location of a non-conforming building. Uh, can form a proper basis for a finding of hardship, and in this case, that certainly was textbook. Because the building itself is non-conforming, as I said at the beginning. The building i- i- is more non-conforming than the than the dormers, but because the dormers are new construction. So number one was the the finding that the, of the, under the case law, that it the existing location of a non-conforming building establishes hardship. With regard to the parking variance, there's a lot of case law that has been uh accepted for decades. Properly so by the Zoning Board of Appeals in the Center Design District that where a a building itself, a commercial building. Predates the establishment of the of the zoning regulations. And, you know, you look at all the buildings in the downtown center district, many have no parking. When you look at, you know, all the restaurants and what have you, here we have some, but the board again found that because the building is pre-existing. And non-conforming as the parking, that was appropriate, and underlying all that was the fact that based upon the history here, going back to two thousand and two. The granting of these fairly de minimis parking variances have not caused any negative impact on the uh the surrounding neighborhood.
Yeah, very good. Okay, uh, any other commissioners have any questions? Alright, seeing no hands or hearing none, um, Attorney Fallon, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your kind attention, thank you.
And with that, I'll I'll go into a public comment on on this application. Um, Ms. Harrigan, do we have anyone, members of the public that uh signed in to uh talk on this?
Uh, I don't have anybody that has indicated that they would like to speak, so I guess if we want to just do. One final request from the public, if they would indicate to us that they're interested in speaking on this public hearing item for forty-five Sherman. That would be great.
Okay, anyone? You can unmute yourself and. I don't hear anyone and I don't see anyone, so I'm going to uh presume that um we don't have any takers. Alright, and uh on that note, then Attorney Fallon, you get out of rebuttal.
You don't have to listen to me any further, thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, with that, I'll I'll close the uh public hearing on this item, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is thirty-eight Beaumont Street, application of AAP Builders LLC to establish a Residence B zone. On a portion of a property zoned Design Commercial District.
Chairman Raymond Rizzio for the record, um, happy representing AAP Builders with regard to this application at thirty-eight Beaumont Street. It's re- actually a pretty simple application, uh Chris, if you can pull up the site plan. I think the property previously, at least, um, previously, I think, was before this commission to change the zone to. Hundred percent ECD and that was denied a year, a while ago. Uh, our application is just to make the property a hundred percent Residence B. As you can see. We're gonna zoom up on this. This property sits behind the old Fairfield Dent, with the old Dvoras Bakery Fairfield Dental. Uh, across the street are some condominiums and then um, streetwise, uh along the post road is um. West Fair TV. In the rear of the property is that old historic cemetery that's presently in the town of Fairfield's. name. There is an old easement that goes through that, uh, to that cemetery. What our client would like to do is basically, as you can see, the house currently sits in the DCD zone, which makes it fully non-conforming because in a DCD zone, you can't have residential on the first floor. Um, and you can't have a property that's a hundred percent residential, and I know the commission's familiar with many discussions about the percentage of residential in a, in a DCD zone. So in this instance, we have a fully non-compliant property in the, in the DCD portion, but that if the property was zoned residence B, would be a hundred percent conforming. Um, we believe that thi- this doesn't really fit the purposes of a DCD zone. Um, the property has no outlet to the post road. Property really has no relationship to the post road. Um, the Beaumont Street is a dead-end property with, with basically from this property, uh, let's call it south, um, every other property on the street is, um, residential and, as I said, is a dead-end zone. It'll, dead end. Additionally, to try and develop this commercially, we'd have to tear down the house, make the second, first floor the resident, uh, commercial. Uh, then you'd have to probably need a variance to park commercially in the residence B zone. Um, this split zone just makes the property almost impossible, uh, to develop. It's not big enough to handle DCD on its own, and it doesn't, it, right now, we don't even conform to the, to re- the, don't conform at all, as I said, to that zone. So what we'd like to do is make the whole property residence B. Um, we think that would be consistent with every property from post road back, that's not fronting on the post road back. And, um, we believe it's consistent with your master plan. Um, the way it's currently zoned, there is, there is a, a general feeling or general underst- uh, general thought, uh, per- general understanding of the law that there is a, um, not a requirement, but a goal is that each zone be, that a property be zoned one single use and not multiple uses. I'm not really sure why this cut down the middle, it was never in one lot. But for consistency, we'd like to have this property be one hundred percent residence B. We think it fits, it's more inconsistent with the master plan, it's more consistent with the neighborhood, and I think it's, uh, and the commission's already looked at this before and decided that they didn't want, want it to be totally commercial. For all those reasons, it's actually a pretty straightforward application. Um, and allow this property to be, go from totally non-conforming to totally conforming. I, I, I don't really know, I mean, it's probably one of the more straightforward applications I think I've had before you. Certainly will be the most straightforward application I have before you tonight.
Very good. Excuse me.
If you're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any, uh, any commissioners have any questions for Attorney Rizzio? Yes, Commissioner Braun?
Um, maybe, this might be for Jim Went, I'm not sure, but is the end goal of this to build an eight dash thirty G development? That would be my only concern because I think that I don't, I haven't done the research recently, there's some restriction on eight dash thirty G when it's in an industrial zone? I can't remember exactly offhand.
I can answer that question. It's, that's not the intent, it's not in an eight dash third, it's, we could come in for eight dash thirty G today if we wished because there's residential permitted in DCD zone. This is not an industrial piece of property. The split is residence B and DCD, which permits residential.
Okay, I misunderstood. It's not industrial, it's DCD. Okay, thank you. That's not the goal there at this point. Okay.
Any other commissioners have any questions for Attorney Rizzio? Commissioner Brayman?
Yeah, it's, uh, um, other than sort of decreasing the number of, you know, split zone properties, uh, which are sort of awkward, um, is there any other goal, um, of the P O C D that this, uh, would satisfy, you know, any other sort of squaring off or, uh, you know, uh, policy that this would achieve?
Well, it's, it's, it would be a res- a resident, uh, what are you talking about generally or as relates to this property?
Um, may- maybe both.
Uh, I, well, I would say that the current zoning split zone, first of all, would be inconsistent with your master plan because it makes very difficult to develop. Certainly be inconsistent because the goal of DCD is really to service a mixed-use projects along, along the post road. This project has, this property has no relation to the post road. The only, the only use it could possibly have been would have been to additional parking to the, uh, Fairfield Dental project. Um, and then, and on top of that, you have a, an easement that runs directly through it. So i- i- that easement, um, the split of where the neighborhood becomes residential, I don't think, I don't think it fits the goals of the DCD as stated in your regulations, but because I don't think there's a way to put mixed use there, I think it's too small a lot. Uh, you would have to elevate the property or put commercial on this, uh, put commercial on the lot, which wouldn't work on first-floor commercial. There's not enough room for parking, which means you'd have to have parking underneath the building. I mean, this would be an extremely difficult lot to develop unless it was either one zone or the other. Um, so for consistency of zoning by making the lot one zone, I think is, 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 is certainly a goal that we're looking to achieve. I think you, uh, you have a dead-end lot, a dead-end street that currently is narrow. Um, some of the housing is challenged for parking. I don't think adding commercial, um, commercial traffic on that street would, uh, would be something that would be desired by, by this commission or anyone in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, I appreciate the, uh, the application. Thank you, Attorney Rizzio.
You're welcome.
At this point, I'll, um, ask for a public comment. Um, Ms. Harrigan, do we have anybody signed in the chat?
I don't have anybody who has requested the other chat.
Excellent, well, we can make our public call here for any member of the public that wish to be heard here on this, uh, on, uh, on Beaumont Street. No takers, so Attorney Rizzio, you also get a pass on rebuttal.
Thank you. I don't think that's the way it will go the rest of the night, but thank you very much.
Very well then, um, with that, so no, no public comment on thirty-eight Beaumont Street. Um, and, uh, with that, I will, uh, close the public hearing on that item. And move to our final item on the agenda, fifty-five forty-five Park Avenue, zoning compliance application of Primrose Development LLC for a one hundred twenty-unit residential development pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General statutes, uh, in an R three zone. This is being continued from June eighth, twenty twenty-one. And, um, I believe that where we, uh, last left off was, um, with some public comment. Um, I'm not sure if there were any other members of the public that were still on our list when we, when we broke. Um, I do know that we have, um, one represented group, uh, of interest, uh, the Merritt Concern, Merritt Parkway Conservancy with, uh, Attorney Green, uh, on tap. Um, are there any other members of the public not represented by Attorney Green who, um, who wishes to be heard?
Yes, we have two people who are, um, in queue, one of which, um, asked to speak this meeting instead of last meeting. So first we have, um, Bethel Rooney, and then second, we have Marshall Weiss.
Excellent, okay, so Ms. Rooney, the, the, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good, okay. My name is Bethel Rooney. Um, I live at eighty-five Weeping Willow Lane in Fairfield, and my husband, Thomas Rooney, joins me in this statement. We have sent two letters to the commission dated June eighth and delayed June twenty-second. Um, the applicant has compared this proposal with the ninety-four unit affordable housing complex at four-one-eight-five Black Rock Turnpike. The properties are the same size. However, the Black Rock Turnpike building has ninety-four units, a hundred and sixty-one bedrooms, and no dens. Is four stories over the garage level and seventy feet tall. It is in a designed commercial district where zoning regulations allow a building height of sixty feet. The proposed Park Avenue building has a hundred and twenty units, one hundred and eighty designated bedrooms, and sixty large dens to be used as bedrooms. Thus, it has the potential for two hundred and forty bedrooms. It has seven stories over a garage level and is eighty-two feet tall. It is in an R-three residence district where zoning regulations prohibit buildings over three stories of forty feet. In addition, the total floor area of the proposed Park Avenue building is more than thirty-five thousand square feet greater than that of the Black Rock Turnpike building. No zoning district in Fairfield allows buildings as tall as the proposed building. The maximum allowed is seventy feet in a transportation commercial park district. The applicant wants to exceed that maximum and rise more than twice the height allowed in an R-three residence district. The applicant claims the proposed eighty-two-foot-high building is consistent with other buildings in the area. It is not. Most of the tall buildings mentioned by the applicant are in Bridgeport and quite distant from the site. Moreover, the Jewish home buildings with Bridgeport because Fairfield refused to permit structures exceeding the height limitations for an R-three residence district to built on the former Jewish home property on Jefferson Street. The Sacred Heart dormitory in Fairfield, that is six stories with no garage level, is set far back from Park Avenue, now low to campus. It was built pursuant to a variance many years ago. No buildings of this height have been permitted on the SHU campus or in the North Stratfield area since then. The applicant claims that doctors, medical personnel, and educators are potential tenants for the proposed building, but that claim is not realistic. People in those professions prefer more upscale and spacious accommodations. Nor are elderly persons likely to be tenants as the complex has only two elevators and is lacking in green space and other amenities, not close to useful public transportation, and too far from shipping and other services. The tenants most likely to be attracted to this development are college students, both undergraduate and graduate. The applicant even stated that the building was designed to look like those on the Sacred Heart campus. For this group, dens unquestionably will be bedrooms. Lower-income families and young working adults also may choose to live here, although the complex is not appropriate for children. For these groups as well, dens likely will be bedrooms. The applicant conceded at the hearing for its previous eighty-unit proposal that the dens probably would be used as bedrooms. One of the aims of affordable housing is inclusive civility. This complex does not meet that goal. It may be inclusive within the building, but it is not inclusive within the community of Fairfield. It is about as insular and isolated as you can get in this town, especially a person of limited means, a senior citizen, or the site is not within walking distance of most stores and other amenities, nor is it convenient to reach them by public transportation. According to the Greater Bridgeport Transit Agency, the bus stops are half a mile away at Old Town Road and Park Avenue below the intersection with Jefferson Street. The walk to those stops is along a steep and Muslim sidewalk west stretch of heavily trafficked Park Avenue. The service is infrequent. The GBT also calculates that it would take nearly an hour to get to the Fairfield Main Library and more than an hour to get the ShopRite and other stores on Black Rock Turnpike by bus from this site. Fortunately, the applicant provided traffic predictions only for the intersections in the immediate vicinity of five-five-four-five Park Avenue. It claims that the proposed complex will not generate enough traffic to warrant analyzing the Jefferson Street Old Town Road intersections. Although it concedes that these intersections are busy and that fifty percent of the traffic generated by the site will come from or flow to the south on Park Avenue and its intersections with these streets. Its predictions as to the amount of traffic generated by this proposal are based on projections in a trick generation manual. The applicant, of course, selected the factors to be considered for these projections. We do not know what they are or have any opportunity to analyze them. Nor do we know why the applicant assumes what percentage of traffic will go where. Common sense, however, says that an affordable housing complex with two hundred and forty potential bedrooms, filled primarily with people who go to work, school, or both, will generate far more traffic than the applicant predicts and that a substantial majority of it will go to or come from the south. The applicant's traffic report anticipates that the new Sacred Heart dormitories on Jefferson Street will reduce traffic levels in this area. This conclusion belies common sense. The addition of many students on campus will increase area traffic, whether they travel in private vehicles or Sacred Heart vans or buses. The traffic report also states that the Sacred Heart Hockey Arena is expected to generate its after the weekday afternoon peak traffic hour. This statement is not consistent with other conclusions in those the applicant's traffic reports and Sacred Heart's traffic report. In its current report, the applicant does not say what the peak traffic hours actually are, at least not for the afternoon. However, in its report for the eighty-unit complex on which it seems to largely rely, the applicant indicated that the peak afternoon hour was between six and seven P M for some of the distractions in the immediate vicinity of the proposed complex. The Sacred Heart traffic report predicted that the heaviest afternoon traffic generated by the hockey arena would be between six and seven P M on both Fridays and Saturdays, and that such traffic would be extremely heavy on some occasions. Therefore, there is an overlap in peak late afternoon, early evening traffic for the hockey arena and the proposed complex. In addition, Sacred Heart indicated that its hockey arena would be used for high school hockey games, which are generally played after school hours in the late afternoon or early evening, coinciding with the heavily trafficked aft- afternoon-evening commuter hours. Similarly, the hockey arena is to be available for public skating, which almost certainly will be during the late afternoon and early evening weekday hours as well as during weekends. The Sacred, Sacred Heart Hockey Arena also will host conferences, conventions, and other events, which will add more congestion to the already heavy, heavily trafficked commuter hours in this area. This traffic was all ignored in the applicant's traffic report. The applicant alleges that its proposal will increase traffic. This increase, when added to the increases that will result from the new Sacred Heart dormitories and hockey arena, will result in unacceptable levels of congestion in this area. The hundred and ninety-one parking spaces provided are not adequate for this complex with potentially two hundred and forty bedrooms. As there is no parking on Park Avenue and no commuter parking lots in the area, the lack of adequate parking will result in vehicles being parked in various illegal spots in the driveway, especially along the southern boundary, thereby impeding or even blocking access for fire and other emergency vehicles. Although the town's plan of conservation and development is not controlling the zoning decisions, it should be taken into consideration. The Stratfield section of that document The Stratfield section of that document clearly indicates that low-density residential use as well as open space is the preferred use of land in this area. At face, this application is a spite proposal. In February of this year, this commission refused to adopt the town's zoning regulations and its plan of conservation and development and grant this applicant's request for a zone change and sweeping modifications to the zoning regulations, so it instructs an eighty-unit non-Section eight-thirty-G housing complex on this site. During the hearing on that matter, the applicant's attorney publicly threatened to apply for a substantially larger housing development pursuant to Section eight-thirty-G if its request was not granted. Now, the applicant has fulfilled its promise. The applicant has stressed that this site was at the outer edge of Fairfield. It was called the Crossroads. The applicant said something similar at the hearing on the eighty-unit proposal, referring to this area of town as the outskirts. Obviously, this reference is made because the site is close to North Bridgeport and Trumbull and in the less affluent part of Fairfield. No one would refer to the far reaches of Southport or Greenfield Hill in that manner. Actually, the site is a gateway to Fairfield as it is on an arterial road and adjacent to entrance-exit ramps to the Merritt Parkway. If allowed, this eighty-foot, eighty-two-foot-tall massive structure will be, for many people, a first, last, and enduring impression of Fairfield. We do not think it is the impression the town wants to make. The public interest in other matters sufficient to deny or modify a Section eight-thirty-G application are not limited to a single category or element. In this case, there are serious and harmful impacts on a number of matters of public safety, health, and welfare. We described these in detail in our letters of June eighth and today, so I won't enumerate them all again here. However, we believe the negative impacts of this proposal clearly outweigh the need for thirty-six units of affordable housing. We urge this commission to deny this application or at least to modify it so that it is no more than three stories or forty feet high and has no more than sixty units with adequate parking and green space. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mooney. Appreciate your comments. I believe you said that Mr. West was next?
Did I do it right? No, it's
Yep, we can hear you say it just one more time.
Stop with the hello. Hello, can you hear me?
Now we can hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm not that good with Zoom, and that's and that's why I wrote all those emails. I don't like to bother you, but, but this happened Saturday. Did you people, anyone get my Saturday emails?
We did. We did receive.
Invite you to look at the Merritt Parkway bumper to bumper to bumper to bumper. Did anyone get a chance? Also, I was thinking to, I asked somebody, what is the student population Sacred Heart? They said they didn't know, so I looked up on the, and I did send it to you today. There are nine thousand students at Sacred Heart. You hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Because I go on the telephone. I apologize. I'm just not that good with technology. There were nine thousand one hundred fifty-six students at Sacred Heart. Assume that two thousand will be online, so that seven thousand they'll be commuting. Say two thousand be at different times. So you're having five thousand cars in that area. The traffic is terrible if I, because I'm a senior citizen. Five o'clock to six o'clock or six-thirty in the morning, you get out of Weeping Will Lane, there's nobody around. You, like, I had to go someplace yesterday. It's about two-thirty. I don't know what was going on the Merritt Parkway. I don't know if there was an accident or what. People were getting off all of Jefferson, going up toward Park Avenue was you could go over. So what I did is I went around the other way. I got on the lane, so I let me in, and I went up, I guess it's down Stratfield Road to East to Skytop Road and took one up there, went to Madison Avenue and then crossed over. What would normally should take me ten minutes, took me a half hour. So I don't think anybody, unless they live here and look out the window, realize the traffic problem. You can't compare this development with the one on the other one they just did because they don't have Sacred Heart there. Also, I don't think renters would want to rent because when I played cards in Stanford, which I stopped, if, unless, the traffic between six-thirty and ten-thirty in the morning is bumper to bumper on the Merritt Parkway going to Stanford. Coming home, three-thirty to seven is bumper to bumper to bumper. So the renters who work in Stanford or New York will want to rent near the railroad station. See, they're not going to be attracted to that area because it's not convenient to drive. So if they're going to rent, unless it's much cheaper, they'll rent near the railroad station. So I assume that they really want to dorm there because the, unless the workers in Fairfield that work in the health area, the teachers, the lawyers, I mean lawyers, the civil servants want to live there, the people commuting toward either to New York, back and forth would not want to use that area, and if you go toward New Haven, three o'clock in the afternoon, it's a parking lot. So the parking, the travel isn't what they put besides what's on the Merritt Parkway. The whole traffic flow is, is just not right. And now they have all these dorms. You're creating, he's creating a big problem, not only for the people on Weeping Will Lane, down a drive, Stratfield Road, but for all the people who want to get coffee, there's an emergency vehicle. Does he want, I hope they could arrest somebody for manslaughter because if they're really setting us up for a big problem there, when you start doing everyone that going there, that's the one thing is the traffic more than anything else. Personally, it doesn't affect me in the sense that I go six o'clock in the morning. So right now, if I get home by seven, well, it's towards seven now getting, getting tough, and, and the students aren't there. Can you imagine what it's going to be like when the students are there? They have like five thousand cars, they have all these people, they're going to be, there's an accident. We need emergency vehicles on our road. You can't get through. I mean, it's not that it's, I object to it. I think they could have a five to ten affordable housing unit with a park in front of it. That, not against affordable housing. I'm against being murdered and being killed in a traffic accident. Also, the water, which no one seems to really realize but us, it could be a mess if they don't do that drainage right. They could room our whole property. Now, I, this is off the subject because it's Woodbridge. My mother had a house on top of the hill. For fifty years, there was never a problem. Some developer moved the land during a rainstorm. She had about two feet of water. The police came, the fire came. I, I sold the house about ten years ago. I can't find the article, and then they straightened it out because some developers screwed it all up. So people can screw other people up, they take a big profit and move away. And I'm more concerned really about the safety as well as the water. And now that I know the true enrollment at Sacred Heart, which I did fax to you, I'm sorry, emailed to you today, because I didn't know about it, so today, I did the research. There are nine thousand students enrolled at Sacred Heart. It's not three thousand, it's not four thousand. And I don't know how they're going to stop the water from coming down a hill. It's, I'm sorry to say it, it's a nice proposal. I wish the men the only, the very, the best. It's not the right building for the property. It's a danger to the people. The water's a danger to our property, and I think we should have something written that will give us compensation if the water destroys our property anymore. And if people are killed, they should be taken response or injured. They should take some of the responsibility, knowing that's a traffic hazard. It's not like they don't know. All they have to do is come here in the morning, go on Saturday and Sunday, park near the, near the Merritt Parkway and see all the cars that are bumper to bumper. Come six-thirty in the morning till ten o'clock, see going to Stanford bumper to bumper. Coming home, the same thing, going toward New Haven at three o'clock, bumper to bumper to bumper. So, I mean, it's not rentable to people who commute. So all I can say is I hope you deny the application. And I know they're out to punish us because we spoke at the meeting. Maybe you could make it a tenured apartment with a beautiful park, limited only to affordable housing, and I think it's a wonderful thing. And I just don't want to die trying to get out of my park, out of Weeping Will Lane, and a lot of people are having that problem. Thank you very much. I spoke my piece. I don't want to keep writing you emails. But he'll come back again. Why doesn't he answer? Build the Taj Mahal. He said last time, if we don't offend the eighty-minute units, we're going to build a bigger one. Eight-thirty-G was not designed to cap people killed or maimed. I mean, that was not the purpose of eight-thirty-G. It's something that they're trying to prostitute. It's a good thing, but it's not for this particular piece of property. Thank you, people.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. Any other members of the public?
Uh, next we have Christine Gogelberger.
Yes, hi. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you fine.
I'm a, I'm a little, I, I missed the first hearing a couple of weeks ago. I figured I'd come in now. I want to, you know, just start by saying that I one hundred percent support what Bethel Rooney and Marshall Weiss so articulately were able to put forth. I, I have not prepared any written statements, but I have, and I have sent some emails to the committee, and I hope that you have had a chance to, to go through my points in there. Basically, I, I'm, I'm here to, to also just say that I, I too feel very strongly that the placement of this particular building of this proposed size is, is absolutely astonishing that, that, that it's even, that you would even consider having something like this near the traffic circle at, on Merritt Parkway. I happen to live in the valley down here on Toll House Lane, so I, I, I'm a little closer to the Mill River than the other parties who did speak. So one of the things that I am greatly concerned about and what I would, I would actually like to hear from the, the, from everyone is, you know, has anyone talked to the, the Mill River Wetland Committee? The health of our environment is also the health of our people. So something of this size, a hundred and twenty-plus, potentially two hundred and forty unit, there could be some serious drainage and sewage issues that come out of the construction of such a, a large building. So what I, I didn't see in any of the documentation was anything that was satisfactorily addressing the, the, you know, potential sewage and drainage issues. And, and that is, is something that, you know, living as close to the Mill River, I know that the wetlands are very important to the people who live in this area. All along the Mill River, doesn't matter where you are, you know, the, the, the health of the, the Mill River is important, which is why we have people looking out for it and, and us included. We're not allowed to do anything here in, on Toll, Toll House Lane that will potentially negatively impact the, the setback that we have here. So we're very sensitive to that. But I think that because maybe this building is just a, just far enough away that we can, the developers can ignore the Mill River, that, you know, it, it's sort of out of sight, out of mind, and I really feel strongly that, that there needs to be some further studies done on how the increase in cars and potentially buses, because I think Bethel had brought up a really good point, which is there's, the people living in these, these, this apartment are going to need a place to put their cars if they have them. And if they don't have cars, the residents of this building are going to be looking for substantial public transportation. And I've lived here for over twenty years, and there's no public transportation, to my knowledge, that I could even get to without a very dangerous hike up Park Avenue and over the, the bridge towards Sacred Heart. And even then, I'd be hard-pressed to say, oh, yes, there's a bus, you know, fill in the blank. I don't know where. Now, and, and also what happens with the children? I mean, if this is proposed to be affordable housing, I imagine that the developers are not leaving out the potential that there will be families living in there. These families will have young children. These young children will need to get to school. To get to school, they'll need to ride buses. Where are these children going to be picked up? At the traffic circle? I can see that being an exceptionally dangerous situation. And I do, I, I've commuted to Stanford for the last twenty years to work. And I was, I was here before we had this traffic circle. And now that we have the traffic circle, I've seen what the traffic is like in the morning as people speed up the hill or speed off of the Merritt Parkway to get to their destinations like Sacred Heart or the, the Cancer Center up here, they come off the Merritt quite quickly. I know that there was a traffic study. It was a short read, to be quite honest, because it was largely based on existing traffic patterns. And I would like to see some documentation or studies done that would show what the projections are. And I think Marshall Weiss had, had very eloquently talked about, you know, increased traffic could potentially mean increased danger to the residents, not just to this area, but also to the people who could potentially be living in this building. So I think that it's very important for us to not look at this as a superficial matter as, hey, this is a, a building, we'll meet some affordable housing requirement that we have to, to push through. Let's take a look at some other areas. I mean, you know, there, there are, there are other areas that will be potentially safer than this one. I just, I'm, I'm not seeing it, having lived here as a resident for as many years as I have, like I said, over two decades. And Park Avenue would be, I, I think it, maybe you can say nothing's happening now from a safety standpoint, but, you know, something will happen, and by that time, it'll be too late. The damage will already be done. So I, I'm against it, as are many of my neighbors in the Toll House and Stevenson Lane area. So that will conclude my, my comments, and I, I, I strongly urge you to deny this. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. See ya.
Mr. Chair, I don't have anyone else. I think we're up to Attorney Green, who has his own folks who he's going to call on.
Yeah, okay. So, and any other members of the public not represented by Attorney Green? All right, very good. Attorney Green?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission staff. My name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport with the Law Offices of Green and Gross, and it's my pleasure to appear before you this evening on behalf of the Merritt Parkway Conservancy, whose mission it is to preserve, protect, and enhance the historic Merritt Parkway through education, advocacy, and partnership. We are appearing this evening, and joining me, I should say, are Wes Haynes, who is the Executive Director of the Conservancy. You'll hear from David Parker, who is a member of the Board of the Conservancy, and you'll hear from Steve Trinkus of Trinkus Engineering. I guess I should begin just by saying that, you know, we, the Merritt Parkway Conservancy favors the notion of affordable housing. They are not opposed to the use of this site for affordable housing. The Merritt Parkway Conservancy embraces the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion in everything that it does. But the point is that this development But the point is that this development endangers the historic character of the Parkway, and it is the position of the Conservancy that all development must be achieved in a way that respects the historic character of the Merritt Parkway, and that has not been achieved here. So there are three areas that we're going to discuss tonight, and I'm not going to take up a lot of time. But basically, the three things that we want to discuss with the Commission tonight are, first of all, the impacts of this, the potential impacts of this development on the historic character of the Parkway. You'll hear then from Mr. Trinkus about some defects in the stormwater plan that exist with respect to this project. And finally, I will address the issue pertaining to the purported wetlands approval involving this property. We have submitted some materials to the Commission. I apologize that some of them were submitted today, but some of them were responsive to information that was just provided to us, and so we, we wanted to respond, and this has all been a little bit fluid. I might also say that we have been engaged in discussions with Attorney Rizio, with the applicant, in an effort to resolve our concerns. And in fact, Attorney Rizio and Attorney Russo and I had a lot of communication last week. And interestingly, we do have, I think in many ways, some common objectives with respect to this development. So I think the first thing is I would like to introduce Wes Haynes, who is the Executive Director once again of the Conservancy, and he submitted some materials. Hopefully, you've had a chance to see them. I think we'll need to, pardon me, call them up. And I don't know, Emeline, I don't know if Emeline is able to call up those materials when Mr. Haynes asks for them. But with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Haynes. Preliminary to his addressing the Commission, I would ask Mr. Haynes that you describe your experience, training, and education briefly, just for the record. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Haynes.
Thank you, Attorney Green, and thank you, Chairman Wagner and members of the Commission. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, good. My name is Wes Haynes. I'm Executive Director of the Merritt Parkway Conservancy. I am here tonight to speak about the historic preservation aspects of this. My credentials in that area, I hold a Master's of Science in Historic Preservation from Columbia. I have a 45-year career in Historic Preservation, working for the New York Landmarks Conservancy, the Preservation League of New York State, the New Jersey Historic Trust, and most recently the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation as a preservation planner and preservation specialist. I'm qualified by the National Park Service as a preservation architect and an architectural historian. Merritt Parkway Conservancy, as Attorney Green said, is a nonprofit organization with a simple mission, and that is to protect, preserve, and enhance the Merritt Parkway. The Merritt Parkway is a federally designated scenic byway, listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and as such, it is Fairfield's largest historic district and it's Fairfield's largest place of scenic value. Preservation of such resources are strategic objectives in your P O C D. The Fairfield stretch of the Merritt is currently among the most pristine from a scenic perspective. Merritt Parkway's original design and current landscape design guidelines are premised on the predominant local single-family residential zoning for a lot such as this, abutting the Parkway's right-of-way. The Merritt Parkway is a fragile-built environment whose historic and scenic value is destroyed by overscaled developments such as the one proposed in this application. Could I have the next slide, please? We believe that the proposed overscaled development terraced up to the edge of the historic district at a height above the historic district will be highly visible from the historic district, intrude upon its scenic quality and physically and visually harm its historic character. The Merritt Parkway's concerns about the physical impact of the Merritt include erosion from the site's disposal of stormwater onto the right-of-way, and the change in microclimate resulting from placing the adjacent right-of-way vegetation in shadow invites invasive plants and harmful insects, which we are making serious efforts to control and eliminate. These pests weaken mature trees, resulting in a safety hazard to motorists, especially during the kinds of storms we are experiencing now. You'll hear more about these issues later on in our presentation. But to illustrate the visual impact, let's compare the application to the one you denied earlier this year, which was two stories lower in height depicted at top, to the one that's in front of you today. The Merritt Parkway Conservancy monitored the public hearing but decided not to oppose that development. Although we were concerned with its size, we were not convinced that its height would break the tree line, be highly visible, or threaten the adjacent shoulder vegetation with its shadow, and we hoped that you would resolve site drainage issues subject to approval. This application is entirely different. We are deeply concerned that the enlarged, very long elevation of this greatly overscaled building facing the Parkway will break the tree line and invite invasives threatening the health of the adjacent tree cover to its north and safety on the roadway. In previous discussions of applications, the Conservancy observed this Commission describe this kind of large box, flat-roofed building as, quote, "industrial" or, quote, "commercial" in appearance, and we agree with your assessment. Making it visible from the Merritt is completely at odds with the Parkway's naturalistic-built environment. In its visibility, appearance, and sighting so close to the historic district, this building will harm the Merritt Parkway as a historic-built environment. Next slide, please. And that, this is just a comparison of the south elevations. The next slide, please. And a comparison of the front elevations at top and the rear elevations below. We would expect the rear elevation to be visible from some vantages from the Parkway travel lanes, as well as very visible and overscaled from nearby Weeping Willow neighbors. Next slide, please. At your last meeting, Attorney Green requested that you instruct the applicant to prepare drawings that accurately depict this building. Given that the applicant has submitted identical renderings of the denied and current applications, accuracy is needed, for the rendering accompanying this application significantly downplays the height of the building in its, in the current application and does not depict the building they proposed to build. This is important because it is the kind of drawing the press is likely to use to describe the application before you. Specifically, we ask that you ask the applicant to prepare, at a minimum, a full section through the site down to the Parkway roadway and north elevation of the building down to the Parkway roadway. We also think, given the size of this building, that a balloon test would be helpful for you to gauge the appearance from the roadway. Without these tools and with this misleading rendering, we do not think you will have sufficient information to make an informed decision. Next slide. In summary, this building compared to the denied application is two stories higher, 34.5 feet higher, 42% overall higher, and will be highly visible from the historic Merritt Parkway. It's a 33% square footage increase over the denied application, a 33% unit increase over the denied application, and it's 119% unit increase over the current zoning. I would like to turn it over and keep the slides up for my colleague, David Parker, who is a member of our board. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes, and, and thank you, members of the Commission. My name is David Parker. I'm an architect based in Southport with over 30 years of experience as a licensed architect here in Connecticut. I have an undergraduate degree in architecture from the University of Virginia and a Master's of Architecture degree from Harvard's Graduate School of Design. I am a Fellow of the American Institute of Architects. I am a trustee of the National Trust for Historic Preservation and a board member of the Merritt Parkway Conservancy. I have testified as an expert witness in matters of historic preservation. I would like to address concerns about the impact of the proposed structure on Merritt Parkway, a National Register-listed historic resource. This, as Wes has discussed, this project is a huge increase over what this Commission previously denied as development on this site. What I would also like to make reference to is that these massive developments do set precedence, and they do, or they are doing serious harm to the historic resource that is the National Register-listed Parkway. In particular, I would like to reference this Commission's recent approval, which was not unanimous, of a, of a project, an 830G project at 4185 Black Rock Turnpike. That proposal, which, which we did object to based on its scale and proximity to the Parkway, was 72 feet high. The current proposal at 5545 Park Avenue is 83 feet high, an increase of 11 feet. The proposal at 4185 Black Rock Turnpike had 150 feet facing the Parkway. The current proposal before you tonight is 325 feet long. It's more than twice as long facing the Parkway and 11 feet higher. This proposed building will most definitely be visible from the Parkway. It is higher than the tree line with no space whatsoever for screening, given that virtually the entire 2.41-acre lot is being paved. Additionally, as others have noted, there is no outdoor recreation area for children as part of this proposal. The Black Rock, 4185 Black Rock Turnpike had 94 units for a density of 41% per acre. The current proposal at 5545 Park Avenue has 120 units for a density of 49.79, essentially 50% per acre. So it, so, and I'm making these points just to say that these develop, that these massive developments do set precedence, and if you continue to approve these, they, they are doing, they will do serious, serious harm to the, to the National Register-listed Parkway, which is an historic resource that you do have the ability to, to review and to comment on and to, and to make judgments based upon. This building is, is massive, essentially an urban, as Wes noted, industrial-commercial structure plopped on the bucolic Historic National Register-listed Parkway. The, and, and I would also note that this is the second development of this scale, or actually, this is larger, that, that has come before this Commission in less than six months' time on, on the Merritt Parkway. In both of these instances, I would also note that the site plan approvals that were given were essentially bait and switch. With both, in both instances, the developers coming in with much smaller buildings, getting site plan approval, and then proceeding to this Commission with taller, much more denser proposals. Attorney Green has clearly defined that this Commission does have the right to protect historic resources, and we would encourage you to do so. We, we are not opposed to equity, inclusiveness, and diversity. In fact, we, we favor that. What we are very, very concerned about is the impact of this huge development on the National Register-listed historic resource that is the Merritt Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. If I can just share my screen for a moment. I don't know if that, so this is a picture from, can you see the photo I'm showing?
Not yet. We see Joel Green is starting. There we go. There, that's it.
This is a photo directly adjacent from the property, from Google, that shows the view of this property from the southbound lane of the Merritt Parkway, approximately 250 feet south of the bridge at Park Avenue. Can there be any doubt, any doubt that this eight-story building will be plainly visible? And this is, it's unique, this picture, because if you use Google Maps and you drop down, there's generally a summer view and there's a lot of foliage, but one of the slides, as you advance up the Parkway, I think was a leftover view from the fall. And you can clearly see the property, and there could be no question that you will have a view of this eight-story structure. I've provided you with a memo, and once again, I want to apologize for providing that today. However, this was the same memo, frankly, that was provided, substantially identical memo that was provided in response to 131 Beach Road and 4185 Black Rock Turnpike. And it speaks to the fact that the preservation of historic resources such as the Merritt Parkway is a, an issue that can be relied upon by a Commission in responding to and denying or modifying a, a proposal pursuant to Section 8-30G. In this instance, as you've heard from Mr. Haynes, we, we once again support the notion of affordable housing on this site, and I think that by way of some compromise in this instance, I believe that if this Commission is not inclined to deny the application on that basis, at the very least, we believe that the application, the approval should be modified to embrace a structure of the same size as the previous application, which, frankly, balancing everything that the Conservancy did not come out and oppose, because it recognizes and respects the right of this property owner to develop this property. It respects the need, once again, for affordable housing, but once again, it must be balanced with the need to preserve the historic resource, that is, the Merritt Parkway, for the benefit of everyone. So I just wanted to make that point. The next issue that we'd like to address, and
Attorney Green?
We're going to try to move this forward.
Attorney Green?
Yes.
Tommy Newton. I want, just a question on the last point you made before you moved on. What, what, has the Conservancy done an, did some analysis or review of the initial application, the four stories, and made a determination that it would not impair the historic character of the Merritt Parkway?
I, as I indicated, first of all, I didn't represent the Conservancy on that, but I think that Mr. Haynes can address that. But as I understood it, there was a balancing done with respect to that application, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Haynes to address that.
Sure. This is Wes Haynes speaking for the record. We didn't do a formal analysis. We did an informal analysis, and we felt that that would be a preferable solution to a bigger building that we would likely see if we had succeeded in defeating the last building. We, we don't really want a building of this size in, in here. We don't think it's really good urban design, but we don't want a, a building that is going to be such a monstrous size that it's going to be above the tree line either, so close to the Parkway. So we didn't do a formal analysis. The last, for Black Rock Turnpike, we did do a more formal analysis, but it didn't seem to convince this Commission otherwise, and we don't have the base elements of the drawings to do them ourselves. We think it's incumbent upon the applicant to prove that this building is not going to be a burden to the, the historic character of the Merritt Parkway.
I should also, and if I can just add to that, and I don't think it's any secret, in our discussions with the applicant, we are discussing the possibility of a robust landscape buffer, and certainly, the four-story building is one that, that a, that a buffer could feasibly minimize those impacts, but we don't believe that there's any basis upon which, with the additional height, that that could ever be achieved. So, so we're talking about robust landscaping, we're talking about some modification of the exterior treatment of the building, and I, you know, again, I've had a lot of discussions with the applicant, and, you know, they're free to address that as well, obviously, but...
Because my concern, my initial thought is, and this commission on Beach Road was, you know, found that we would modify to get below a tree line. We also then found with the Black Rock, as mentioned, that in weighing the interest there, affordable housing, the historical character did not outweigh the need. I mean, we treat each application differently, we try and be consistent, but this is a different project. As you said, the, the length, the size, the fact it's not next even to the Hi Ho, for example, that it's not next to a commercial catches my attention. This, if we were gonna go down the route of granting with the condition of, for example, like we did in Beach Road, going from five stories to three stories, something like going from six to four, we need a basis to go off, we need a basis upon which we can find that. And what catches my attention, Attorney Green, is you showed that picture where, you know, the foliage is not very deep, and four-story building of that size will still be seen.
It will.
You know, I, I guess it goes to your point about, you know, benefit, cost-benefit analysis, or just a balancing act, a test, but, you know, is there any, unless you've said anything else, that's my concerns is...
Well, let, let me offer this. First of all, we, I understand that the applicant may be requesting a continuance of the application this evening to respond to some of the engineering issues we've raised. If that is the case, and if the applicant is willing to share with us, as I understand it, it's, it's CAD drawing or some data, digital files with respect to the site plan and the elevations in their CAD file, we would happily perform that analysis. I'll, I'll refer to Mr. Parker on our ability to do that if we have the baseline data. We'll happily supply that to the commission, and we'll happily provide the commission with contour, with elevations. Am I correct on that, Mr. Parker, through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, we could do that if we were given the CAD files. Without the CAD files, it is a, a Herculean effort to try to...
And I assume the CAD files are not something that we're provide, on publicly available?
No.
Okay. I assume not, based on what you told me, but...
And, and frankly, it was my recollection, and I didn't go back and listen to the video of the last hearing, but I thought that the commission had actually asked for elevations or for some drawings of that specifically.
Well, I actually just listened to the video today, and I think Chairman Wagner had said, "We would like it, but we're not, we're not gonna, I don't, gonna require it."
And then...
You're on mute, Chairman.
I'm, I'm not, can you hear me?
You are now.
Yeah, that, that's right. I mean, it, it's not something that, you know, is necessary or required, but I did in, I did invite them to do so. So, if, if they're cooperative with you in supplying that, and in conjunction with, you know, a request for a continuance, then, you know, of course, we will support that effort. That's news to me.
Yeah, so, anyway, if it is continued, and if, with that, we will happily do that work. The next issue that we'd like to address is the stormwater plan with respect to this development. I'd like to call upon Steve Trinkus of Trinkus Engineering, and I would initially ask Mr. Trinkus to once again describe his education, training, and experience for the commission.
Good evening, Chairman Wagner, members of the commission. My name is Steve Trinkus, I'm a licensed professional engineer with an office in Southbury. I've been licensed in Connecticut since nineteen eighty-eight. Since about two thousand, I've gained a lot of expertise in low-impact development, which is a focus on both volume of runoff and water quality issues, which we have to address in addition to peak rate attenuation. So the letter that I submitted for this is really just focusing on the stormwater management aspects of the plan. On the site plan, the applicant has four drywells proposed. I think one of them is mislabeled, that's in front of the building, as there are two drywell number twos, but assuming that the one in front is drywell number one. This is a drywell within a drainage line between a catch basin and manhole. It's a four-foot-deep drywell. I think the assumption is there's gonna be infiltration occurring, but there's no test holes for any of the drywells. Test hole number one here is in about a five-foot cut, so it's deeper than the existing grade. Drywall number two is three to four feet in a cut there, and then the three and four, which are on the north side of the building, are actually in very deep fills, between nine and eleven feet. One point that hasn't been discussed by Attorney Green is, you know, beyond the parking area on the north side of this building facing the Merritt, you have a concrete retaining wall, except for the eastern end, which is about two foot below grade, is anywhere between twelve and seventeen foot in height. And the detail simply shows it is raw concrete, not being faced in stone. You know, when you get over, you know, thirteen foot, you're almost getting to a two-story building wall of a house at, at that height. So, you know, seventeen foot, that is a substantial wall that's sitting there, and again, the building is sitting up above that, so it's gonna be quite visible based on the, the Google image from Attorney Green. In the stormwater management, you know, we have to have a separation to groundwater of three feet from an infiltration practice, or bedrock to four feet. None of these drywells have testing, so that question is completely unknown. Two on the north side being in fill material, you know, it's what type of fill is going in here? Probably structural fill, because you're gonna be driving over it, and you also have to support the load of the building that you're gonna be putting in here. So it's unlikely those drywells would infiltrate at all. It's also been my professional experience, you don't really wanna put water behind a structural retaining wall. In the event the drain at the bottom of the wall somehow gets clogged, now you can saturate the soil behind a structural wall, which is not a good thing, and can lead to issues with the structural integrity of the cell, of the wall itself. The runoff all runs towards the west, it goes through a online hydrodynamic separator, and this is similar to the project that was opposite the Hi Ho. Online configuration for separators greatly reduces their ability to reduce total suspended solids loads. This is based on years of monitoring data at New Hampshire Stormwater Center, and I cite their, the two thousand and twelve publication, which has, they're actually monitoring data for the first eight years that the facility was in operation. From the separator, the water goes into what the applicant is considering a wet pond along the western property line. We have the two thousand and four Connecticut DEP Stormwater Quality Manual that lists all different types of components that have to be within each of the stormwater practices. And in this particular case, the wet pond does not comply. While the applicant has a little forbay where the riprap is shown just below the retaining wall, that's about two foot deep, it is not four to six foot deep. The purpose of these is to trap sediment, so it doesn't get into the rest of the, the practice.
Can you, can you call up a, a site plan and, and show us on, where, where are you talking about that?
Yeah, actually, if I can share my screen, yes, I do have it up, so. I guess the question is, are you seeing the site plan now?
We are.
Okay, so where my cursor is right now is where the hydrodynamic separator is, it's a circle that's not colored in.
I have to move the cursor around a little bit to sort of...
Yeah, the cursor's right on a manhole now, right above, yeah, this rip...
Upper left, just, just beyond the parking area in the top, top portion of the...
Yeah, so this, this area that is hatched with what we call the gravel hatching from AutoCAD, this is the forbay area, and based on the contours, which, when you look closely at the plan, is only two foot deep, it really needs to be four to six foot deep to trap sediment before it goes out into the wet pond itself. The bottom of the wet pond itself is at two forty-six, the outlet pipe, which goes out towards the upper left, is set at two forty-nine, so you have a permanent pool of three feet. The manual recommends a pool depth anywhere between three and six foot, so the pool itself would conform. However, you have to also contain the water quality volume within the wet pond, and we don't have volume computations to show that the water quality volume from the site will actually be held as a fixed storage volume here. The other issue with the pond is that you have to have what's termed a three-to-one length-to-width ratio, and this is the flow path, where the water's going. So as the pond is a, is filled up to elevation two forty-nine, when water comes in from the forbay into this, as you're coming into a static pool of water, that water is gonna pretty much make a right-hand turn and go to the outlet. It's not gonna continue going south to the other end of the pond, because water's gonna take the path of least resistance, which is on the surface to the outlet pipe. So the base, the flow requirement is, from the inlet to the outlet, is a three-to-one length-to-width ratio, and that does not meet this particular requirement. Wet ponds also have what's called an aquatic shelf along the perimeter of the pond, it's twelve to eighteen inches in depth, it's vegetated, kind of to make a marsh buffer around the pond, is a safety feature, but also from a water quality standpoint, because you have emergent wetland plants, you know, in that area. There is no aquatic bench at this point. The bottom of this basin is also about ten to twelve feet below grade, we have no test pit at all. Based on the NRCS soil data, the site is Charlton Canton soils, which are moderately well-drained soils. You can have shallow bedrock in some of these cases, you can also have some light or very compact glacial tills, but the bottom of the basin, I should say, the, the permanent pool, the two forty-nine elevation, has to be at or below the seasonal groundwater table, and we have no idea where the seasonal groundwater table is, because we have no test hole. Furthermore, the applicant in their stormwater routing analysis for the pond claims an infiltration rate of four inches per hour. Well, first off, there's no infiltration test done, so that number is simply not relevant at all, but you also have a, a permanent pool here. Water does not infiltrate into a saturated zone. Water follows the hydraulic grade line, and in a pool, there is no hydraulic grade line, so it's gonna flow on the surface and go out. It's not gonna infiltrate. And why is infiltration really important here is, based on the impervious cover cited in the stormwater report, there's roughly eight thousand, eight thousand square feet of impervious cover on the site now, for the single-family house, the driveway, and I believe the outbuilding. The proposal is seventy thousand plus square feet of impervious cover, that's over a seven-hundred percent increase of impervious cover, and the runoff volumes will be significantly increased by this development, and the only way to reduce runoff volumes is to infiltrate the water or design your pond in order to provide the channel protection volume. And those criteria are not, not met in this particular site. On page four of my report, I go through what the volume increases are, and actually, for the water quality storm, which is a one-inch rainfall in twenty-four hours, their analysis shows that there's no runoff from the site in pre-existing conditions, which makes sense because you have a large parcel with only eight thousand square feet of impervious cover. Under future conditions, you have point-one acre feet of runoff, which is roughly four thousand cubic feet of runoff. What I did is I took the pre-development, I made it point-zero-zero-one, simply to get a positive number in, and so I could divide it out. For that water quality storm, you're gonna see a ten-thousand percent increase in the volume of runoff coming off the site, and the fact that the water quality storm constitutes between eighty-five and ninety percent of all annual rainfall events, every time you get one-inch or less rainfall event, you're gonna have significant volume being discharged, and we have a, a downgradient wetland area just off the site here. We have no idea where this runoff goes once it hits this wetland, if there's a culvert downstream, or if there's perhaps a channel within the wetland area. But runoff volumes are well documented in professional literature as causing erosion in streams because of the increased flow duration to get rid of the volume over time. So you will see adverse impacts within this particular wetland area. The applicant states that the water quality volume is met, as they say the pond has a point-oh-one-seven acre-foot storage below that two forty-nine contour, except the water quality volume right above that in the report says it's point-one-three-two acre-feet, so point-one-oh-seven is less than point-one-three-two, so they're not meeting that requirement.
Can I, Mr. Trinkus? Did, so, did, did, issues before you got to water quality, you, you, you sort of concluded the wetlands piece by saying that it was gonna have an adverse, that the development would have an adverse impact on the wetlands? You know, did you raise these issues when the applicant presented their prior plan to the inland wetlands conservation department for their...
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I was only retained late Friday afternoon for this project, so the answer is, no, they weren't. So I was only recently engaged on this.
Okay.
For the groundwater...
If I could just follow up on that question, because I think it's a good one. Mr. Trinkus, aside from the wetland issue, which I think the chairman has properly pointed out was not raised before the inland wetlands agency, can you talk about what the general impacts would be, though, putting aside the wetland issue, what the flooding and stormwater issues would be, for example, on the state property to the north?
Yes, I can do that. I'll answer that in one second. One other point is, under the two thousand and four DEP manual, we also have what's called the groundwater recharge volume, which is a volume of runoff that you want to infiltrate to match the pre-development infiltration rates under the post-development condition. The applicant is claiming this is a redevelopment project, and therefore, under the manual, you take the proposed impervious cover and you minus the existing, so you have a much lower impervious cover. As this is single-family zoning, that would be appropriate if we're proposing single-family houses, is a redevelopment of this site. In this case, this is pretty much new development, so that volume is not calculated properly. With that being said, because there is no reduction in runoff volume being discharged from this site in the northwest corner, you will have increased flows heading down the slope, and this, the photo from Attorney Green showed, the Merritt Parkway is lower than the site, so this runoff will get to that shoulder area along the Merritt. The Merritt, having been a historic road, generally has drainage along the center of the roadway. There is not, in my experience, swales or drains on the outside of the highway, except in some locations. For the most part, it, it all pitches towards the, the center island between the two north and southbound lanes. So there will be a lot of increased water going that way, which could, if it goes onto the pavement itself, especially during the winter, can cause icing conditions, and I think we all know the traffic on the Merritt and the, you know, potential for accidents on a, a dry day is fairly high, but, you know, having water bleeding out during the winter onto the pavement where it can cause black ice, you know, just causes a higher potential for, you know, accidents on that roadway.
Mr. Trinkus, I need to, I need to jump in there. So, first of all, would your analysis be the same, whether this was the originally designed, you know, structure, the, the, what, what, what you've heard tonight is the denied application as opposed to the, the larger building here? Is the analysis the same? What you've heard tonight is the denied application as opposed to this the larger building here. Is the analysis the same?
Uh, I I if the this if the building footprint was the same with the same parking, then yes, the comments would be the same.
Yeah, the applicant has represented both to us as well as the inland wetlands wetlands agency, which we'll hear about. And I think from attorney Green and others and, you know, shortly. Is represented that the footprint of the building, the parking and and all of those other relevant details are are the same. The difference between the two is that they added two additional stories to create additional, you know, um uh housing units. So wi- with that as a foundation, is is your analysis the same for a, you know, a larger building and a smaller building?
Y- yes, it is, because the footprint of the building, as you just pointed out, has not changed. They've simply gone up with it. So you just have simply have a higher roof, but you have uh the same area of the roof. Um.
So so. So before you move on. So with that, then, I need to understand your analysis relative to the risks of flooding on the Merritt Parkway. Because you raised the issue, which I think is a substantial danger of public health and safety. But our task is not to assess, you know, uh to 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 consider. Uh, issues which uh are not probable, are not um uh um. Likely to occur. Um, you know. Are you, i- i- y- y- you used um various words like if this occurs. In your experience, there aren't drains and the drainage on the Merritt is typically in the center. Did you do an analysis here which concludes that the flooding is not just probable? But will occur to a certainty if this cons- this building is constructed in this way. And that the drainage on the Merritt Parkway is such that there will be ponding and icing and there will be. You know, harm to public safety.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I would, I did not have an opportunity to drive down here, but I will say, uh, having grown up in Redding with a grandmother and and Hamden. Uh, we always took the Merritt from Black Rock all the way down uh to New Haven, so I'm familiar with the section of road. If the hearing is continued, I will uh take a ride out, but based on the contours, this water is being uh directed generally in a. Uh, northwesterly direction and it will come in contact with the the uh parkway at some point likely west of the site. Uh, but I'll be happy to take a look at it in the field, but assuming that the contours which are shown on the site plan are. Consistent and continue in their general alignment, this water will get to the Merritt Parkway. And therefore will discharge onto the edge of the pavement. And potentially cause issues, but I will be happy to take a look at that in the field. I did not have an opportunity.
Okay.
Prior to tonight's meeting.
I I appreciate that. And so then this question is directed to uh Attorney Green. In light of your experts' um tentative opinion. That construction of either the smaller building or the larger building will result in flooding, to be confirmed. On the Merritt Parkway through, you know, what is what is a a state, a Connecticut state highway? Um, has this plan then been referred to, you know, the Connecticut State D O T and have they reviewed it and? Um, you know, what what say they about that?
As I understand it, the applicant is has to submit it to um. The Department of Transportation because they are, I think, due to their access. I will, you know, interestingly, Mister Chairman. When I looked at this application and I've been involved with this property in the past. This is actually a corner lot under the commission's definitions that is on the corner of Park Avenue and Merritt Parkway. It's kind of interesting. And for the fact that it's an eight dash thirty G, I would have raised that issue in terms of, you know, setbacks and so sort of. There's still some inaccuracies in the grid and the drawing, but um I it seems to me. That and I appreciate the care that the commission is taking. Uh, I believe that Mister Rizio, or I'm sorry, counsel for the applicant. Will be looking to um continue this to respond to Mister Trinkus's comments. I think that this is an area of importance to the to the commission. I would. Ask that the matter be continued and that we be permitted to perform that analysis if the commission is inclined to hear it. Uh, I I have another area that I want to, um, I know you may have more questions for Mister Trinkus. I have another area regarding the sort of the the status of the wetland permit with respect to this that I can get into. But I would ask the commission to hold this open and we'd be happy. The Merritt Parkway Conservancy would be happy to perform this analysis. We'd be happy to, if given those data points, we'd be happy to. Provide the more um information that this commission, I think, in a fair exercise of its jurisdiction, particularly. In an application of this significance, I think, should consider, but obviously it's in your discretion, Mister Chairman and the commission.
Well, is it, is it, and 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 perhaps, uh, you know, I'd like, I'd like to, I maybe it would, maybe it's reserved for rebuttal. I I I don't know. Um, but it's my understanding that this proposal was submitted to the state D O T. If not, this, the prior application with respect to the curb cut and um. Uh, the entrance uh way to the Merritt Parkway and that, um, you know, state D O T. Had um come back with a favorable review uh of the plan. Now, I don't know whether the issue of the water and flooding. On the other side of the property was brought to their attention, but it would seem to me that they would have reviewed their proposal from, you know. All aspects and if they had given their approval, then it was, you know, then 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 they'd done so. Um. And so, uh, you know, I um. Uh, I hesitate to reopen something that's already been done, um, but if it hasn't, it seems like something that should be looked at.
Well, if it's a matter of public health and safety, I know that this commission is always, obviously. Always focused on that, but obviously it's becomes a point of greater focus, well, of equal focus, I suppose, with respect to an application of this kind.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I just have one final point to make and then I'd be happy to answer any questions. Uh, the other aspect of stormwater is water quality, and I will tell you from recent experience. Uh, that's also an issue with D O T because they are subject to uh the M S four permit as many towns are. Actually, all of the towns in the state. Um, the applicant is using basically a series of secondary practices per the. Two thousand four manual um catch basins with a three-foot sump, a hooded outlet pipe, um, the online separator. Um, which are not going to uh reduce the total suspended solid loads to the eighty percent goal, which Connecticut D E P has. Um, but you also have other pollutants such as metals and hydrocarbons, which are uh uh. Uh, due to vehicle movement and is virtually whatever is not roof area is paved parking is also a concern that needs to be addressed. Uh, one last point, the applicant is showing floor drains, uh trench drains within the two uh underbuilding parking garages going to the stormwater management system. That is not permitted by Connecticut D E P. Uh, building floor drains have to go to sanitary sewer. They cannot be discharged. Uh, to a storm drainage system. Uh, this is a, has been a policy uh from D E P. Since the late nineteen eighties and I actually ran into this. Uh, in a project in Westport, uh, which was an eight dash thirty G and we therefore had to uh direct it to the sanitary sewer. Um.
So what you're saying is is so if I may, you're saying that the the drains in the building. Are linked to the stormwater management system and not to the sewer system.
That's correct. They have to go to the sanitary sewer system. As far as that goes. Um, so I believe Connecticut D O T would have some serious questions um. With the drainage being discharged into the right of way of the Merritt Parkway. Um, because it doesn't appear based on the mapping that there is. Some off-site drainage system that this runoff is going to collect in and go away from the Merritt, so it's likely to follow the contours. Uh, directed directly to the south side of the Merritt Parkway. Um, thank you.
And Mister Trinkus, if you could just cut through you, Mister Chair again. If you could just comment on what the impact of uh having those drains connected in that fashion are. And the potential for uh pollution or the potential for uh impacts, aside from the wetlands impacts.
Yeah, well, I mean, water quality impacts, you know, will affect, you know, surface water. Um, and ultimately, you know, uh. You know, if it drains down to the Merritt Parkway into that drainage system now, the Merritt Parkway drainage system um. Would have to address additional polluted water that they currently don't have to deal with. So their system may need to have changes in order to address uh the increased flow. Um, D O T wants you to address uh peak rate attenuation and also water quality as far as encroachment permits. And based on what I've seen on the plan, those standards are not being met and therefore would not be accepted uh by Connecticut D O T.
I don't know if the commission has any questions for Mister Trinkus.
Any uh, any of the members of the commission have any questions? Commissioner Brong?
Um, Mister Trinkus, I I know you probably didn't have time to review this, but and this came up in that Black Rock term spec application. There's a difference in parking, subsurface parking between the new application. On this parcel to the one we saw six months ago, I guess, where they're extending. The subsurface parking deeper into the earth, I guess, below the building to make it longer. Um, no subsurface geological survey was done, as they told me at the last hearing we had a couple of weeks ago. I know this is very, very steep and um, I don't know, is, could there be expo- uh ledge or bedrock or? Could there be a need to blast? And if so, does that change any analysis about where water goes underground? And what happens? I mean, should more, should it be done? Should a subsurface ju- survey be done?
Uh, in my professional opinion, yes, when you have substantial uh cuts, you know, on a site. Um, uh, at least my clients, we want to know if we have bedrock or if we have unsuitable soils. Or something else before we propose a project so we can address the issues with that. Um, as along the Merritt, there are clearly areas of exposed bedrock, um, you know, along the shoulders. Um, but you know, you're quite a ways below ground, so you very likely would be in bedrock with a Canton Charlton soil. Generally, the bedrock can be eight to ten feet below grade on average. Um, it's not a guarantee. You can have areas where you're twenty foot without hitting bedrock, but without uh an investigation, you have no idea. Um, also, you may uh encounter seepage within the rock um. Of of groundwater, which now you have to design a drainage system to convey that water, obviously around your foundation. Uh, because you don't want the water seeping into your uh foundation as far as that goes, so. There should be a a geotechnical investigation of the soils where you have deep cuts of. For the parking garages on this site, in my opinion.
I I have another question, that um retaining wall, I I'm not sure if I heard you correctly. How tall is the retaining wall and where is it located? I know it's on the north side, but is it all along the whole length, the three hundred twenty-five foot length?
The retaining walls, maybe I would guess, looking at the plan, three to five feet away from the northern property line. It starts. Literally almost at the eastern corner of the property, runs west parallel to the north property line. Has a slight angle to the southwest and then goes due south along the line of the parking, virtually to the southern property line. On the two ends of the wall, that wall is about two foot below grade. At the point where it bends to go southwest um. Uh, along the northern property line, that wall at that height is seventeen feet tall. At that particular point, based on the applicant's plan. Um, another thing to keep in mind is for a concrete retaining wall like this, you're going to have a massive reinforced footing. Uh, down into original grade to support that wall, so there's a lot of site excavation. Associated with building the footing for a wall of this magnitude.
And the top of the wall, is that flush with the bottom of the building, of the building like? The ground floor where people's apartments would be?
The, it looks like the uh.
Others, when you walk on the land where the development is, is that at the top of the retaining wall?
Well, the first floor above the parking garage is showing at either two eighty, point five or two eighty-one. The wall is around two seventy-five, so I guess the wall is roughly five foot lower than your first floor. Um, you know, it slopes as it goes from the east to the west. You'd have to do some sections. Uh, from the building going to the north to really take a a view of. Um, you know, the grading and the height of the wall versus original contours.
And then two other questions related to the wall. Um. What's on the other side of the wall? And how far is this wall from the wetlands? I see wetlands on three sides of this property. The long wetland that all stretches the length of the property between, I think, the property and the Merritt, and then there's one. Uh, either side of that detention basin on the left, on the um west side, I guess. But how how we, I know this is a Mill River watershed and there's a whole Mill River watershed plan that we're supposed to be following to protect Mill River. Which is, by the way, under attack um for being dewatered right now. There's a hearing right now pending uh with the D E P. To um remove seven million gallons a day of water from Mill River. Um, below this area, but this does, this is in the Mill River watershed, so anything that happens here, I would suppose could affect Mill River. I think there's a tributary nearby, maybe even near that wetland, so I'm curious. There's a hundred forty-four foot wetlands buffer in Mill River watershed for development activity. Is this within the hundred forty-four? Foot uh buffer area? Like, I can't tell from the plan at all.
Yeah, they should, there is a line on the applicant's plan, um. That it, I think, is uh the the wetland's uh upland review area. And by the looks of it, it looks like it is a hundred and forty feet from the wetland boundary. There's not a a a dimension to it. Um, the northern retaining wall of just eyeballing the plan is uh. Probably about eighty to eighty-five feet from the wet uh the wetland that is uh north of the site running. More or less parallel in the eastern easterly to westerly direction. Um, the wetland off the northwest corner of the site where the detention basin is discharging. Um, again, the the, you know, the ba- basin and the discharge points are probably within roughly fifty feet. To a hundred feet of that wetland and the small wetland area that's off the southwest corner of the uh site. Um, again, the access path to the basin is, you know, uh. Well within that hundred and forty-four foot upland review area. Um, uh, another point.
Yes, I I need to, I need to jump in here and and ask Attorney Green, I mean. We, I I I would be interested to hear your arguments about the um. Finding or determination by the inland wetlands agency that there was not a material change to the. Plan here and the prior approval uh of, you know, the the. The application at that agency, you know, carries forward to this present application. And why all of these, and they're not issues, we're just reciting facts from the from from the application. Why why these shouldn't be considered a collateral attack on a prior decision by, you know, one of our fellow. Uh, municipal agencies in the process of the application getting to, you know, our. Uh, commission for for further considerations. How do we uh assess? Wetlands issues in the face of our Indian lands agency commission. Uh, approving the project as as laid out in the plan.
The answer is uh. There is no wetlands, uh, there is no approval by the agency of this plan. There's no procedure, that's point one. Point two is there is no procedure in the inland wetlands and water courses regulations. For modification of a permit.
That, oh, let me stop you there, okay, because as a practical matter, not not a practical matter, let me rephrase that. I'm interested to hear your arguments with respect to procedures or lack thereof, which were followed or not followed. In the context of renewing this application, which is different from the one which was filed before, fine. But all of the argument you, Mister Trinkus, confirmed that. If the footprint of the building is the same, the parking lot is the same, the detention system is the same, everything is the same from the prior application, this application. Like, why why are we in the first instance now uh attacking the merits? Not the process and the application issues. issues?
First of all, first of all...
Merits of the wetlands approval.
The jurisdiction of the inland wetlands commission, uh, and the inland, inland wetland agency, as you know, is protection of the wetlands and water courses. So that's one. There is no procedure for modifying a permit. In this case, what happened was, according to wetland staff, wetland staff received a call from counsel for the applicant, asking about whether this was a modification or whether it was de minimis and indicating that this commission, that plan and zoning wanted some sort of written confirmation as to the status of the application. As we stated in the memo that we submitted to the, to the, um, this commission today, yesterday, there is, there has to be an application filed for permit. That did not happen here. It could be an application for a staff certificate where there is a right of the public or concerned citizens to appeal. That did not occur here. What happened here is staff rendered an opinion. I'd like to call your attention to the wetland approval that I have submitted in the record. I can screen share it if you'd like, because there's an interesting loop and loophole sort of in the law on this. And, um, if I may, um, if I can get to the right document, which I hope I can.
So your argument on attacking the merits of the underlying wetlands approval is that they didn't follow the process to get this subsequent application approved by, by, uh, wetlands?
That's the first part.
That therefore the argument's here?
First of all, they failed to follow the procedure in this instance with respect to this application. But significantly, if you go, and I had submitted the approval by wetlands of the previous application.
We've seen that.
And, and an exception is, and I call the commission's attention to page 14, condition seven, where in this instance, in this particular instance, the inland wetland agency established as a specific condition of approval, standard condition of approval, page 14, paragraph number seven. Any change in approved plans must be approved by the inland wetlands agency. The permutee shall also obtain the agency's approval prior to making any additions, deletions, or modifications to any document, including easements that involve a regulated area. Then on page 18 of the approval, uh, it states, uh, in paragraph, condition number 30, "All work and all regulated activities conducted pursuant to this authorization shall be consistent with the terms and conditions of this permit. Any structures, excavation, fill, uh, obstructions, encroachments, or regulated activities not specifically identified and authorized herein shall constitute a violation of this permit and may result in its modification, suspension, or revocation." So this falls into that unique area of the law where the agency specifically reserved to the agency any modification or change of this permit. But once again, our regulations don't provide for any modification. You reapply, and once again, there is this opportunity for the public when it's published, that notice of, you know, the staff certificate, that you have an opportunity to address that. And, for example, citizens can petition to appeal it and bring that to the commission.
Well, at, at, at least at, at that point, you have an opportunity to, for, for the application to be presented, for, you know, the, the public to engage and a decision to be made from which an appeal can be taken and, 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 and so I get that. So now, so, and so as a fun, as a, as a, as a procedural matter, you're suggesting twofold. One, that we should deny this application simply because the inland, they, they have no inland wetlands approval, okay? Number two, if we don't deny it on, on that basis, then you're at liberty to attack the merits here of wetlands issues because they didn't seek it there. And we should, in the first instance, be, um, uh, assessing the impact...
Not quite.
Issues.
Not quite. What I, I was asking Mr. Trinkus is beyond the wetlands, there are, and I'm happy to pose the question to Mr.
There, there were, but then it, it, what he was talking about with Commissioner Braun was all about, uh, wetlands. And, um, you know, he, he went through the whole impact and then he was restating it in response to our questions and then just articulating where on the, on the plan were the wetlands located and whether it was within the 144 foot.
I'm, I'm, I'm saying beyond that. I'm saying as a matter of flooding, I'm saying as a matter of polluting groundwater, I believe that Mr. Trinkus will testify that, I, Commissioner Braun correctly pointed out that there may have been a modification of the parking areas. I think that you can make inquiry of Mr. Trinkus, but I'm confident that he will testify that, uh, with hydrocarbons and metals, uh, that come off of cars and parking lots, that untreated stormwater will leave this property, that untreated stormwater will ultimately find its way to, to groundwater, for example. And I, I, well, I, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd welcome Mr. Trinkus to comment on that. Uh, and, and so that is an issue aside from wetlands, that's stormwater.
No, I, I, fine. I, I'm sorry, if I'm, if I'm not being clear. I, I'm not suggesting that everything that Mr. Trinkus was testifying about was not relevant. I, I raised, and, and I interjected and, 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 and told you that, uh, I thought the issue of the flooding on, on, right, groundwater leaving the property and, and entering the Merritt Parkway and causing a, an issue of substantial public health and safety was something that, you know, I hadn't heard before and I thought should be reviewed by Connecticut DOT. Um, yeah, that, that has nothing to do with wetlands, contaminating groundwater. Agreed, it could be an issue that we take up and, and, and issue of public health and health and safety. I'm speaking specifically about the, the attack on the, the wetlands and, 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 you know, the argument that we should reject this application because the proposal will have a, a, you know, a negative impact on, on the wetlands environment.
I, I produced an expert. Uh, we've produced a report by Mr. Logan, um, dated June 18th, that is in the record, where he indicated that the increased height of the building and the proximity of the regulated wetland resource may have an effect of casting substantial shade to the wetland resource, changed the physical character of the resource through changes in vegetative composition. Many of the plants that are found are adapted to specific and often narrow ranges of solar exposure. Changes in exposure may promote greater growth of shade tolerant species. The point, in, in our opinion, this change from a four-story to a six-story building merits careful consideration and analysis that should be considered. And the point is, it has not been considered by the agency or the agency has not elected to pass on it, or staff cannot just, based on a phone call, issue a, an email to this commission suggesting that it's a de minimis change.
Right. And so the, so, so, so the argument is that because they didn't pursue the proper procedure to get the application approved by inland's wetland, inland wetlands, we should take up those issues in the first instance here?
The lack of inland wetland review of the modified plan, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Berman?
Thank you. Two legal questions on this score. One is, is there, um, an appeal, uh, either to the, uh, commission, um, to the, uh, wetlands commission or to Superior Court from the email from the inland wetlands agent on June 21st, uh, stating that, uh, whatever change there was to the prior application was de minimis? That's one question. And then second, um, if there is, uh, a wetlands issue, um, assuming that there were a wetlands issue, uh, that resulted in the absence of a valid wetlands permit for this project, would the remedy be that this commission should make its independent determination on the eight dash thirty G application? And if there is no wetlands permit, then the project simply can't be built? And this was something that came up, uh, if, you know...
Good point.
If you recall in, in the High Street application.
Yeah, that's an interesting point. So first of all, the appeal, I think, is a great idea and I appreciate the comment. Uh, so, well, we, we're, we're gonna, I'm gonna consider that with the client and we're still within the appeal period, obviously.
And, and just to be clear, you know, I, I don't suggest any legal strategy one way or the other to either the applicant or any, any, any inter, uh, interdemeanor. But I do, but I, I raise it because you noted that there was no opportunity to appeal because there was no, uh, you know, appeal, there was no application to the wetlands commission.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr....
Thank you, Mr. Berman. I just, I, I just wanted to, to, to point out one thing, that, that Attorney Green just mentioned that ba, based on a phone call or an email from the, from the applicant. The commission will recall that this matter came up at the last hearing where there was a question of whether or not this plan was consistent with the prior wetlands approval. So we, the, I personally sought, uh, the opinion of the wetlands agency staff to opine as to whether or not, uh, this plan was consistent with that prior approval. That what's in, in, the applicant, uh, collaterally was also, uh, asking for that confirmation. So I just wanted to make it clear for the record that we had asked for that clarification from the, from the beginning. It wasn't simply in response to the staff or the, the applicant, even though that the, the email was addressed to the applicant's attorney. Um, so again, the opinion that was, uh, rendered was, again, the vertical changes did not change the area, the footprint or the impervious surface, therefore they didn't view it to be a modification. So there's been a representation made that there was a modification made to the permit and it was the staff's opinion that, that the, uh, change in height did not constitute a modification. That's all I, I wanted to say on that matter. And I know, I see Mr. Rizio here, I'm sure he'll be here just...
If I could just respond to that.
I, I, we, we do understand that, uh, you know, you, you've raised an issue that presents a question as to whether there has been a change by the building height as impacting the wetlands through shadowing and, and, and the like. And then that's, so, um, go ahead, go ahead.
I don't doubt, you know, I, I, obviously Mr. Went, you know, accept that completely. But all I will offer is that my colleague, Lynda Lasky, spoke to wetland staff today or yesterday, late in the day, I believe. And our brief is based on the response over the call, which was that, um, Attorney Russo had reached out to, uh, staff and had, um, addressed the issue. And that's, that's the facts as we got them from staff. So that's all, you know, I will represent that. And I'm sure, I went through that with Attorney Lasky today and she, she had reviewed those facts with me.
And, and there's the email thread in the record which exists that shows that, that the trail with the, uh, communications between Mr. Went and staff and, and also with the, I believe Attorney Rizio was on that.
And doesn't, and doesn't this demonstrate the specific peril in not having sort of this formal process where there is a submission and there is sort of this following a process, a formal process where the public can respond?
Commissioner Berman?
Since we're gonna be back here, uh, for our continued public hearing, it sounds like, um, one, one question, follow up to my earlier question about, you know, leaving the wetlands issues to, to wetlands. There's a case, um, that I was just glancing at, uh, CMB Capital Appreciation, appellate court, uh, seeing, 2010, 124 Con App 379. It seemed to me to suggest that when you have an eight dash thirty G application that implicates an approval by another agency, there are circumstances, and I don't say that those are the circumstances here, but I just raised the question, that may require the commission, the zoning commission, to make the decision on the eight dash thirty G application, independent of what the other agency, uh, does or does not permit. And so I raised the question of whether we would have to, you know, even if we thought there were a wetlands issue, make our independent determination as to whether this application complies with eight dash thirty G. And whether it does or does not comply with the wetland statutes is an issue to be litigated in a different forum.
That's a, that's, there's...
I understand.
The car matter, you know...
I think, I think that, um, uh, we are wading into matters properly, the subject of our executive session, when we consider the evidence that's been brought before us by the, by the parties. I think you raise an excellent point. Um, I was asking Attorney Green for his position on, on the matter, right? Um, so I appreciate the, the citation and I think we ought to get through, um, what we can in terms of the presentation of evidence and, and, and the witnesses.
I think that the car decision, which may have been Danbury or New Fairfield, was also, uh, informative on that issue, as I recall it. Well, I, it seems to me, um, we're at a juncture where we would ask that the commission, uh, hold the matter open, um, and allow, assuming that the applicant would share those CAD files, we'd be happy to provide, um, the information that would enable the commission to make an informed decision, um, on the issues that we've raised. I'd be happy to dig deeper in on the inland wetlands issue if the commission's inclined, uh, to hear it.
And, and I appreciate that. So Attorney Rizio, you have been biting your tongue and sitting patiently. Um, do you have any objection to the hearing, uh, uh, being held open, um, as we've just discussed?
No, I have no, I just want to make it clear, just so that the commission understands, 'cause I like to think we have a pretty good reputation and there was no shenanigans or any slide by. These discussions were made open with staff, staff, we went through, all these plans were shared by staff with all the departments. Um, our call was merely just to confirm what the staff's decision was, so that the commission had something in writing tonight versus, this is what wetlands told us. And I just want to make that clear. There's, there was no end run game that was played here. This was all been discussed, that it's all been talked through.
You don't have to say any...
The only reason we tried to do it was, Chairman, I wanted to make sure that you had something in your presence to note that these discussions had occurred. That's it.
You don't need to say anymore. Uh, we, we, I asked for that confirmation in the record and, uh...
Thank you.
Please don't take any, uh, of the comments that have been expressed tonight to imply that, um, you did anything untoward or tried to, um, you know, scooch something by without the, uh, you know, in an untoward way.
I meant no disrespect, Mr. Chairman, at all to Attorney Rizio and I hold him in the highest regard, even though, even with his comments at the last hearing.
Well, just, just for the record, I was, I actually went down to the merit and took pictures myself and almost killed myself, but that's beside the point. Um, what, I, I, we, we would respectfully request this commission, um, uh, continue this application. Uh, I just got Mr. Trinkus's letter today at 2:40.
Yeah.
Um, and there is, I'm not gonna even get into it. Uh, I got his, his decision, his, his letter today at 2:40. We need to have our experts analyze it. Um, and I, I can't make any commitment onto the, on referring over the CADs to anybody outside of, uh, my, until I have my client's approval on that. But we will do what we can. Mr. Green, as he spoke to you earlier, we have been in constant conversation with each other. There is no intent, that we're looking to try and come to some kind of resolution. Um, and hopefully we can get there. Uh, but I respectfully request this commission grant this app, grant this continuance. And, uh, if not by July 13th, I would assume by the next meeting, we will be able to have, 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 uh, gain some progress in this matter.
So, so...
That's about the best I can say.
No, I, and, 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 and that's, um, and that's fine. Um, do we want to continue this, uh, to, um, July 13th or to the next meeting?
I, I'm just thinking that I don't know the extent that our, uh, engineers can tackle that all by July 13th, all the stuff that was brought up. Um, maybe if you, if, if we can continue it to the 13th and just give us some time, because I just saw the letter, um, not in my office, I haven't been able to talk to the engineers, I actually don't have cell service where I am. And, uh, and then we can let Mr. Went, maybe just publish it as continued and whether it goes forward on the 13th or the 27th, we can make a decision then.
All right. Now, that, that's, that's fine. Um, all right. Any other members of the, here before we break? Any of the members of the commission just have a quick question? I mean, we're not gonna get into a whole line of wetlands questions at this point, okay? Commissioner Braun?
Um, just, this is not a wetlands question, but I cannot find a copy of the wetlands permit that I requested at the last hearing. I don't think I ever got it. If I did get it, could you resend? If, if you sent it, can you resend it? Because I can't find it in my emails. So the permit from January of 2020 that was referred to, I would, in the email chain that we saw today, I would like to get a copy of that entire, the entire wetlands, uh, decision. Um, secondly, um, I did have, I was in the middle of asking Mr. Trinkus about... about the height of that retaining wall. So the height of the retaining wall is seventeen feet in parts? And does that mean that the built, the eighty-foot building starts above that? So the eighty-foot tall building is higher than the ground facing the merit by like eighty feet plus seventeen feet? I'm a little confused about that.
Uh, Steve Trinkus, for the record, based on the site plan, the top of the retaining wall was around elevation two-seventy-five. The first floor of the building is two-eighty-one. So that's six foot higher and then you have, uh, I guess it'd be the five floors above that. So yes, the building is sitting up. The residential units are above the top of the retaining wall.
Of course they are. Her question is whether the seventeen feet is taken into account before or after you add in the, the height of the building. You need to, you need to consider, what is the elevation of the merit parkway against the elevation of the ground floor plus the height of the building?
And of the wetlands that seem to be within about a hundred thirty feet or less, um, of this building, is there like a cliff going down there, like from the retaining wall? I, I don't know how it affects what's below it, what's outside this property in terms of the habitat, the wildlife, the drainage, uh, does anyone care? It, but it concerns me that you're building a concrete structure that's so tall and so high and I don't know what takes place right outside of that. Okay.
So, I, I, I don't even know that that, whether there, there was a question there, um, apology.
My question has to do with habitat and there is no other agency in this town that can protect wildlife habitat. Wildlife corridors were mentioned the first time we saw the prior application on this, that this is a wildlife corridor that goes down to the Cascades area. And I've, you know, there was no survey done, so we don't really know what's there. I know that, um, not too far, there's a species of special concern, um, um, when we talked about the ice skating rink, which isn't too far from here. I know this is within the whole entire Mill River watershed, which has a plan to try to preserve wildlife. So I'm concerned that we're kind of, kind of ignoring them. There's been absolutely no evidence whatsoever about the impact of this on wildlife or habitat, not to mention the wetlands.
So I guess the question would be to Attorney Green as to whether or not the, um, conservancy has considered wildlife issues in, in evaluating the application?
Uh, the answer is, I was going to ask Mr. Trinkus some of those questions on the impact of the stormwater off-site and Mr. Logan can check in on that if the commission, I can produce that, yes.
Very well, so you can add that to your agenda for the next meeting.
And one, one other question, if we could just clarify where this stands with respect to DOT, that would be a great help to my client.
Well, that was my question for you, who's expert, who came, raised the, the issue and question of whether, uh, groundwater runoff from the property was going to flood the merit, freeze over, black icing, cause a substantial issue of public health and safety.
I'm just wondering with respect to this application, whether there was a DOT review or not?
Chairman, I could probably answer. Look, we go to DOT, DOT doesn't even look at this or talk about this until you have an approval. DOT will look at everything with regard to drainage. For the record, just so you know, there is, I know Mr. Trinkus, I know he was on the merit parkway, visits his grandma, everything else. There's, there, there is drainage along the side of the road. You can see it right on your, uh, Google Maps where there's, uh, catch basins right along the side of the road, but that's irrelevant. DOT will look at every single impact coming off this property on their land from drainage to traffic to all sorts of impacts and we would have to respond to them. We can't get to DOT, they won't even look at it until you have a local approval in hand.
And did that happen with the earlier application? No, I guess, because it wasn't approved.
Correct.
So DOT has not reviewed this?
No, but DOT, DOT will answer all those questions as relates to its impact on the merit parkway. There is still another level of review after this commission, no matter what, what happens.
Yeah, the, um, Mr. Galante, I believe, represented that, um, there was some consultation with DOT, uh, relative to the, um, the street cut and the, and the circle and such, right?
There's discussion with regard to the DOT about changing, that there will have to be accommodations made to the light that's cur, that currently sits on the entrance to the merit and our, and our, where, where our proposed driveway will be.
So, so I suppose that, that, you know, the, the modified answer is not that DOT won't even look at this until you have an approval. You know, you can get some comfort from a consultation with them about a specific issue, but they haven't assessed the overall plan.
Yeah. Basically get back to us when you have something we can look at.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Commissioner Nunez?
Um, this, this retaining wall is being discussed, is it, is it front, um, the merit parkway? Anybody, I don't care who, I'm not-
Steve Trinkus, yes, it does. It is parallel to the north property line of the site, which is more or less parallel to the merit.
Yeah, a thought just crossed my mind after I got this confirmation, if, um, i- i- if it is what is, uh, Mr. Trinkus said, that it's just concrete, um, maybe as part of any discussions the parties have or even going forward with the impact, potential impact, uh, to the historical, uh, merit parkway, if, if anything, something could be done design-wise, maybe that to the, to that, maybe that would be lessened it. Just a thought to throw out there. I have nothing else.
Okay. All right, anyone else have any last, uh, brief questions? Okay. So we're gonna, um, ho, hold the, uh, the public hearing open on, on the application. We'll resume next time with, um, uh, Attorney Green's conclusions and follow-ups from the open questions that we raised here. All right? And, uh, Rizio, you'll let us know whether July thirteenth works or not.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's go.